Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Glendora City Council to order at 6:00 PM for the audience tonight. My name is David Friedenthal, and I am the Mayor of the City of Glendora and serve as the Presiding Officer over City Council meetings. In consideration of others and the business to be conducted tonight, please silence your phones and any electronic devices, and refrain from speaking unless recognized. Again, this is a public meeting for the community of Glendora. We appreciate and respect your participation in this meeting. For the record, all members of the City Council are present, and we are ready to go. At this point, I would like to announce that one item arose after the posting of the agenda that requiring immediate City Council attention and action regarding real property located at 1134 South Berenka Avenue. And I would like to request that this panel conduct a four-fifths vote to add the item to the agenda. May I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alawo, second by Mr. Thompson. And... Kindly vote. It's okay. All right. Motion carries five zero to add the second item. And I'd like to ask our city attorney to read the closed session titles into the record.
Yes, Mayor. Seeing as how the council voted to add a second item, there are two items that the council will be meeting in closed session tonight. The first is with respect to labor negotiations, which is held pursuant to government code section 5495, 7.6, to give its labor negotiators, Adam Raymond, the city attorney, the assistant city manager, and the deputy city manager and finance director Kyle Johnson, direction regarding negotiations with the Glendora Management Association. And the second item is a real property negotiation closed session, which is held and authorized pursuant to government code section 5495, 6.8. And this will enable the City Council to consider negotiations with the Azusa Unified School District and give direct direction to its negotiators, city manager Adam Raymond, Danny Elshire, Jeff Kugel, and Moises Lopez regarding certain real property located in the city of Glendora at 1134 South Berenka Avenue, Seser Parcel 8632-001-900.
Thank you, Mr. Elshire. At this point, I will open public comment, invite members of the public to address this legislative body. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking only once, and only on the two closed session item agendas, or, yeah, agenda items. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of the public comment period. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium, state your name, subject matter, and share your comments. Not seeing any in the room. Do we have any speakers wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will say no and ask our recording admin if we have received any correspondence on these two items.
No, Mayor.
We have not. Then I shall close public comment, and adjourn us to closed session at 6:04 PM. Thank you very much.
Good evening all, welcome back and welcome in if you had not been here earlier this evening. I would like to reconvene our meeting into open session at 7:00 PM. We adjourned closed session at 6:45 and had a little recess break. So here we are back into business. And if I may ask the city attorney to read his report out from our closed session.
Yes Mayor, the council met in closed session on one item with respect to labor negotiations, which is authorized pursuant to government code section 5495-7.6. And the labor negotiations were conducted by Adam Raymond, the city attorney, assistant city manager, and the deputy city manager and finance director with respect to the Glendora Management Association. And the council previously authorized an urgency item be added, which is authorized under the government code, and held a closed session with respect to real property negotiations as authorized by government code section 5495-6.8 with respect to negotiations with the Azusa Unified School District and to give direction to its negotiators, Adam Raymond, Danny Elshire, Jeff Kugel, Moises Lopez regarding the real property located in the city of Glendora at 1134 South Berenca Avenue. And in each of those matters, the privilege and confidential discussion was had, direction was given, but there was no reportable action taken.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Attorney. And with that, we'll commence into open session, and I welcome the audience this evening. My name is David Friedenthal. I am the mayor of the city of Glendora and serve as the presiding officer over city council meetings. I ask in consideration of others and the business being conducted tonight that we please silence our phones and any electronic devices and refrain from speaking unless recognized. Again, this is a public meeting for the community of Glendora, and we appreciate and respect your participation. There is several public comment slash testimony periods available tonight, so we ask if you wish to speak that you complete a speaker card. It's a yellow card either up here on the clerk's office or on the back counter by the entrance door. Please complete that and present it to the recording admin prior to the end of the respective public comment period. This evening offering us an invocation is the pastor, Dr. Michael Cordich of the First Baptist Church here in Glendora, followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led this evening by our Charter Oak student rep Iris Cuevas. Pastor, please, and if you may, able, please stand. Let's pray. Father, today as we gather together here, we are mindful of our first responders as we celebrate them as a national first responders day, so we want to take the moment in time, Lord, to just be, to honor them and to pray for their safety as they protect our safety. Lord, we want to pray for the police who roam our streets in protection of our community, who take time to watch over us and to put their lives in danger when necessary to help as needed. We are thankful for them and their service to us. We're thankful for the firemen and the fire personnel who work diligently to keep us safe from the dangers that occur when fires and other accidents happen. Lord, we're thankful for their service that they give to each and every one of us. We thank you for the paramedics who serve us in the same way, Lord. We ask that you would watch over them, that you would be with them, that you would provide your grace to them and keep them safe as they keep us safe. Lord, now I pray for the council members here and ask that you would give them the wisdom, the patience, the understanding that they need to make the decisions for our community that would be best for our community, but that would also ultimately glorify you. We do ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Pastor Cordich and Iris, great pleasure. At this point, we get our first high school student report of what's going on in the local high schools around us, and in case you're not aware, we actually have four that touch and serve Glendora, so that's always a great pleasure, and I believe this is our first student report of the academic school year, so we're excited to hear about that. And in no particular order, I'll invite Iris Cuevas to come back up from Charter Oak High School and tell us what's happening at the big CO.
Good evening everyone, I hope we're all having a wonderful day. I'm Iris Cuevas, I'm a senior at Charter Oak High School, and I just want to give you guys a little rundown of what were going on there. To start us off, our choir department had an amazing first concert of the school year where they were able to display their talent in many performances and had their audiences in awe. Charter Oak held their annual oak tree challenge, and despite a gloomy start, it was still a success, successful turnout, once the clouds and rain cleared and the sun began to peek out. Our homecoming game was a complete success with a shutout of forty-two to oh win, as well as announcement of our hoco queen, Kayla Lambert. And an amazing halftime performance was coordinated by our very own ASP students led by Ms. Cook and Mr. Stockham, which involved jaw-dropping performances from dance, drama, cheer, and played a big reminder of how much talent we have at CO. The amazing drama department that is filled with so much talent is continuously working hard on their next show, Holiday Inn, which debuts in November. Thanks to the help of our own Ms. Vasquez, many colleges have come to visit our campus, allowing our students to communicate with these schools and learn more about their programs. Our outstanding volleyball team led by Coach Joel closed off its season just last Tuesday with a successful run by holding an eight-to-two record, placing second in league, and being Division VI CIF qualifiers. It is a great honor that we say that after many auditions and tough competitions from other schools, our very own choir department has been selected to perform as a featured choir at the festival at Carnegie Hall in New York on March 28th. We also had great success with our In-N-Out fundraiser. Despite the pouring rain, the truck had a great turnout, and we give great thanks to our event coordinator, Ms. Cook. Our after-school peer-to-peer tutoring that ranges from all subjects has now begun and is a great opportunity for students to get free academic support. And of course, Fast Night has arrived and will be led by our very own staff to help educate our seniors and answer any questions that they may have. We'd like to congratulate Jalen Torrientes, as he is selected to represent Charter Oak High School on the county superintendent advisory council. Lastly, we are also so proud to announce that our very own senior, Nash Flores, has been named a semifinalist in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. His recognition comes from his incredible academic performance and a perfect score on the PSAT. And that's all I have for you guys.
Great, thank you Iris, keep up the great work and send them lots of encouragement from us.
Thank you, I will.
All right, next up, I believe we have a, it looks like a tag team opportunity, and you're both welcome to share. From St. Lucy's Priory High School, we have Juliana Santiago and Ariana Tarazas.
Good evening, my name is Juliana Santiago, and I'm a junior at St. Lucy's Priory High School. St. Lucy's just held their second annual pumpkin patch here at their very own campus. The pumpkin patch was, the pumpkin patch raised money for our sports program. We had games, food, face painting, pumpkin painting, bouncy houses, and so much more. It was a great way to bring people to see our beautiful campus while supporting our athletic program. Along with the two days of pumpkin patch, we held our school-wide open house for any incoming future regents. Inquiring families had the opportunity to visit the campus and learn about various activities and programs at St. and learn about various activities and programs at St. Lucy's. We had club and sports tables ran by student ambassadors, as well as teachers in multiple classrooms for any families wanting to experience a St. Lucy's student's lifestyle. The student ambassadors also run a program to engage future regents called the Cub Program. Future regents or Cubs will receive a letter monthly from an ambassador asking, I mean, forming a relationship like pen pals. Additionally, Cubs can come and visit our school on shadow days and get personal toys from ambassadors. The ambassadors will lead the students through a daily, through a day-to-day life as a student. Additionally, during their shadow day, they will be participating in fun scavenger hunts along the way. Finally, we are in the middle of Red Ribbon Week and the start of the Thanksgiving Food Drive. Red Ribbon Week is used to raise awareness for substance abuse through guest speakers, various activities, and spirit days to call attention to the matter. The Thanksgiving Food Drive allows St. Lucy's to give back to the community. We ask each student to donate items for those in need. We've also made it a competition between classes into who can raise the most in order to promote participation.
Good evening. My name is Ariana Tarazas, and I am a senior at St. Lucy's Priory High School. I'm going to be talking about a little bit of our academics and athletics. So at St. Lucy's, we are a college preparatory school. So we give, we offer all the courses necessary for entry into college your senior year. We offer many advanced classes, like 15 honors classes and many AP classes to give you the option to have advanced education. We are starting our new year, but we did have many amazing college acceptances last year, whether that be to Ivy Leagues or Cal States or some into the Naval Academy. So that is a very special part of our school that we are really proud of, and our academics really helped us get to that point. Our athletics, we did just celebrate our senior night for our fall sports, which is tennis, volleyball, golf, flag football, and cross country. And that just gives us, gives us an opportunity to honor our seniors as they're last year playing their sport. And our athletics are very strong. We have 64 league titles. We have, we have had three Olympians. And our athletics is a really strong aspect of our school that we are very proud of. And another, another important part of our school is our visual and performing arts. While they are not like considered many, considered a sport to many people, they put in the same amount of work as many athletics do. So we honor them. And this upcoming week, we do have our first play of the year. We have about two to three plays for every year. And our musical is a very important part of our school. It is very fun for everyone to come together, and that is, will be later on in the year. And yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Juliana and Ariana. Appreciate the report. Look forward to seeing you again. Thank you. Don't see that they snuck in anyone from Glendora or Whitcomb. Okay. We'll miss them and catch them next time. At this point, I'll ask if we have any reordering or additions to the agenda. Does anyone need, wish to do so? Seeing and hearing none, thank you. That'll bring us to our public comment period. Before I open public comment, I wish to share a statement about a couple of things that have been occurring in our social media news this week. So here we go. Before we open this evening's public comment period, I want to report out and share about a recent action taken on behalf of the city that has become news in social media circles, and I believe needs sharing and clarification as it has fueled a bonfire once again and made many distractions. As most of you are aware, the city extends itself beyond our own agency to regional committees, commissions, and associations that collaborate to serve the city in many areas. These inclusions and memberships are made to enhance, improve, and expand our voice and presence in the region and the state to advance causes, to better promote the position at Glendora to receive and provide better service to our residents than we might have done if we were not engaged. Participation in these entities is through appointed, elected, or volunteer delegates made up of council members and staff. Said delegate becomes the representative on behalf of the city. One of these associations is the Independent Cities Association, an entity founded in 1961, made up of 40-plus member cities in the greater Los Angeles region, with the mission being to network, educate, collaborate, and advance the member cities' positions toward voice, local controls, and address issues of mutual importance related to the matters pressed upon by higher levels of government. I, as the mayor, represent this city at this association and am presently serving on the executive board as their vice president. Earlier this month, in October, ICA was approached by the law firm Elshire and Winder, who happens to be our city's law firm as well, to enjoin in an amicus brief filing on behalf of the ICA member cities to be presented to the United States Supreme Court. The filing deadline was quickly approaching at the time that we were asked, and this became critical. As such, the ICA Board of Directors met, conferred, and elected to support this enjoinment on behalf of the member cities. The brief was in support of a case asking the Supreme Court to review and consider the rights of a city to sue the state. The amicus brief argued for the protection and preservation of local control and the ability to vocalize in opposition of state mandates on many fronts. As time did not allow for this decision to come before this body, the city council, and the case encourages the values that we and our residents clearly state we want to retain, I voted in favor of enjoining the action on our behalf. The people are insisting that we speak up. Well, we are. Through the city of Glendora's membership in the ICA, we are able to leverage the impact of our voices and our local concerns more broadly across the region and statewide. I share that this inclusion is at no fiscal cost to the city of Glendora or the ICA. Hopefully, this will address the social media reporting and let us continue to serve with the best intentions. So with that, I will open our public comment period and invite members to speak and address this legislative body. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once on both on- and off-agenda items. If you are in attendance, please fill out the yellow speaker card and we submit it to the recording admin before the end of the public comment period. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium, state your name and the subject matter you wish to discuss. I will also caution us in the audience that on tonight's agenda are three public hearings, each of which will have a public testimony period. And speakers will be able to comment on that item only during that particular agenda item. I bring this up because in the public period we're opening now, if you speak on one of those items, you cannot come back up during that public testimony during the public hearing. So you can only speak on the public hearing items once. Hopefully, that's clear. So with that, I invite speakers to complete cards, and some have done so, and I have those. I will invite members that I have to come up and speak. First speaker is Mr. Moore. Welcome, Mr. Moore.
Good evening. 1,760,000 people a day, every day, take some form of public transportation in Los Angeles County. That's 3,520,000 trips to and from a day, every day. If even 1% of these trips involve crime, we would be inundated with reports on the news. There's none because it's not happening. Anecdotal stories are not reality. They're not the truth. But it is propaganda. Propaganda, lies, disinformation are the foundations upon which rest authoritarianism, fascism, and ultimately totalitarianism. This is what I've heard here in the September 23rd city council meeting, Mayor. You told the public, be afraid. Public safety is number one. Hire 600 more police. Reduce crime. You mentioned knives and guns, women afraid to ride the public transit, detection machines, police, the stations, et cetera. 1,760,000 people a day ride LA County mass transit of some form. 3,520,000 trips a day excluding, this excludes Orange County and the Inland Empire. No crime reports. We've been inundated. We would be inundated if there was a serious problem, even a half of 1%. You refer to the police as ambassadors. They are not ambassadors. They have guns, and they will shoot and kill you if necessary to enforce the law. Real-life ambassadors or diplomats don't do that. This is conflation, rebranding, spinning, but again, more propaganda. The average household income for California in 2025 is $78,672, a far cry from the 107,000 you stated in your town hall presentation for the Glendora Vision Plan. Again, more lies, more propaganda. From the September 23rd city council meeting, a surreal looking-glass moment took place when this council gleefully announced it was successful in cutting resources to the most needy in our community and their attempt to stay in homes when facing eviction, especially now when housing subsidies, as well as food, are about to be taken away from people. Eerily similar to Sharon Green, at that time, a 71-year-old disabled woman, alone, which this city evicted from her apartment, but she was successfully reinstated back into her residence with the help of an outside organization. You appealed it using our public funds for all of it, yet you criticized the county for using their funds to keep people in their homes. The San Gabriel Valley Cogs, Council, Cogs, is a self-appointed, self-anointed star chamber that has long since outlived its usefulness. It is not elected by the public, nor is it answerable to the public. It acts as a self-appointed overlord to our politically democratically-elected body. The Cogs needs to be disbanded immediately. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Wendy Seifer. Welcome, Wendy.
Good evening, everybody. And amazing you pronounced my last name correctly. I just wanted to speak about happy citizens, residents, and maybe saving some money. And I think as Glendora residents, we're really going to feel this. Just a couple of ideas. One is that maybe we could get some more smart lights around the city. I don't know if you've ever turned from Gladstone into like the 24-hour AMC fitness place right there, and it takes three times. Seems like we could actually use more of those around the city to help with traffic flow, such as what we have at Foothill in Glendora Avenue. So it's a red light when you go to, and then after it's red, you can still, after it doesn't turn, after it's dark green anymore, you can continue to go at a flashing yellow. So one idea. The other one strikes a little bit closer to home. Some of us are a little more passionate about it. I know in my neighborhood. Since we've gone to Athens, we have had a reduced amount of service for our trash pickup. Before, you could leave anything. Maybe it costs us anymore. I contacted Athens to remove some things from my husband's deceased aunt that we wanted to do, and I was informed we could no longer do that. It's going to cost more. So it feels like the citizens have gotten reduced service by going to Athens, and that's been going on for a while. I don't put all three of my trash cans out every week, but I don't get a reduction for that. It would be nice to be able to go back to a little bit more. Maybe we could offset that by not having the streets swept every single week. I'm not sure that they need to be swept every single week, but it just feels like our service has gone down. And I know my neighborhood's a little frustrated. If you've ever had, ever had more than what you could put into your trash cans, I'm sure you guys are frustrated too. So just a couple of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay. Not having any more cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on or off-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. And at that point, I will close public comment period and bring it back to council for comments. I'll start with Mr. Thompson. Greetings.
Mayor, thank you, and I want to applaud you for the wisdom and the enlightenment that you shared in your opening thoughts. As I've said a lot of times from up here, there are certain websites here in town that they're there to create a lot of unsettledness, drama, and they lack little truth. And I would encourage us all to know that and not to lean into what they say. And I appreciate what you've said. You are right. We all are a part of different groups. We interact with a number of elected officials from all over this area. And we do talk, and we understand what each other's doing, the challenges that are out there. And, and I just want everybody to, you know, know that, that we do stand up. We do fight in different ways. Maybe in different ways, and maybe some of you would like this, you know, too, but we're mindful that we're spending funds that, that are basically ours. And it's not like we just have the rein to do that. So thank you, Mayor, for those enlightening, you know, thoughts. And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This last Saturday was the annual Halloween carnival. And community services, it seems like every year, they continue to add more and more things. So it was a phenomenal event. Coming up this week is the Halloween Walk in the Village from 10:00 to 2:00. So know that that will be going on. If you plan to go to the Village, there will be literally thousands of children. So you can come and check out all the costumes and all the fun that they will be having. On Saturday at 8:00 AM, you can go to Dalton Canyon and help at Trails Day. And then you can go from there to the Historical Society at 11:00 and learn about some cultural practices around All Saints Day and Ofrendas and celebrating your heritage. So a lot of wonderful things coming up this weekend. And also, if you want to follow the great example of the students at St. Lucy's and want to give back, especially now, we are hearing of people who are facing increased food insecurity. The Glendora Community Coordinating Council is gathering food for the annual holiday baskets. You can go online, look up Glendora Community Coordinating Council, and see where some of those drop-off places are or how you could help with putting those baskets together. Or if you need to apply for one of those baskets, you can find that information as well. So lots of opportunities to be involved, to find entertainment, and also to find ways to be of service.
Thank you, Karen. Shawna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo Mendel's appreciation for your statement. I'm disheartened by the amount of misinformation being shared on social media as of late. So I will, I'll caution the community like I caution my own father. Just because you see something on social media does not mean it's true. I think all of us have always been available to the community. If anybody has any questions, it's very easy to reach us, and we are happy to clarify anything. It's Red Ribbon Week, and we've got some festivities going on at our local schools. My youngest is at Cullen, and the Glendora Police Department was at school yesterday. So just a quick thank you to our officers and cadets and everybody who helped and passed out pencils and stickers to the kids. It was, it was a big hit. I don't know what the score is, or I assume the game is over by now. I'm waiting for an update, but just wanted to give a shout out to the girls' flag football team at Glendora High School. They played in their CIF quarterfinals game tonight. So hopefully, they had a good outcome. And then lastly, if, kind of... And then lastly, if, kind of on the same note as my first statement in regards to the misinformation, there's been a lot of misinformation shared about transparency and basically how information is shared with the community. So in that regard, I don't know, Kathleen, if you could just give a quick overview of the process for public notice of these meetings that happen twice a month, as well as our Board and Commission meetings? Because this information is available to the community always, like clockwork, full transparency. So if you could just quickly give a brief recap.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, the City of Glendora actually posts all meeting agendas on our city website. And there is a link on the main page that says "meeting and agendas." So if you go to the main page and click on that button, it will take you to the website that posts all our City Council and Commission meetings. In addition, we do also have a page for public notices. Any public hearings that are coming up that require some additional notice, more than the, what is legally required for agendas and packets is 72 hours. The Council has passed an ordinance that has the city posting it seven days ahead. So normally, we shoot for posting a meeting's agenda and packet seven days prior to that meeting on that webpage. If anybody is interested, there is a notify me button on that agenda's webpage. You could add your email address and click on notify me, and you will get notified whenever a new agenda or information gets posted to that website.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That's all for me.
Okay. Thank you, Shawna and Kathleen. Michael.
Thank you, David. I also want to lend my congratulations to the mayor and to Alshire Winder and their law firm, as well as ICA, for the brief that they put out there. I know it was on short notice that they did a lot of this work. And for all these who don't know, I didn't know this either, but this stems from a law of 1907 which stated that cities can't sue their parents. Parent being the state of California in our situation here. This is what this stems from. And this is why a lot of the lawsuits don't go anywhere, because supposedly they don't have standing or because of this law. Correct me if I'm wrong, Danny. But I think this was timely, and I hope that the Supreme Court does look at this. It's a bit of a long shot, but again, I commend all three for putting this forward to make this happen. So at least we can hopefully get our voice back and get some local control back. It means an awful lot to us. So thank you, David, for that. As far as Mr. Moore with the cog, the cog is actually made up of elected officials that you all folks elect, and we get assigned to these various outside entities. The cog is basically, if you want to think about this in mini-county without all the bureaucracy. A lot gets done. They do a lot with the homeless. They do a lot with, in fact, our cog does a lot with infrastructure, such as the overpasses and the streamlining of the freeways, particularly the 60 and the 57 overpass, which they tried to mitigate all the problems with there, as well as some of the situations with the trains and the overpass so they can have traffic flow. They do quite a bit of work, and a lot of work gets done. They're an amazing group of folks. As it, as was brought up about smart lights, I'm really not familiar with smart lights. Adam, do you want to mention something about the smart lights?
Sure. I believe what Wendy was starting to talk about was probably some more automated traffic signals. I know there's been a request at that shopping center to look at some of the queuing challenges we have and the flashing yellow lights. So as part of the city's annual application to the state for some traffic mitigation efforts, I'm not sure if that's on the most recent one or not, but we have looked at those issues. One of the biggest challenges we have in that shopping center is the, sort of the raised driveway approach. So all the cars have to slow down as they go in, which creates some challenges. So definitely something that we continue to evaluate and look at the timing on that traffic signal, which I believe was the question on that. And I know, I see Bill back there in case I misspoke, or he has anything else he'd like to provide. But I believe it's more of the traffic signals.
Thank you for that. And as it comes to Athens, I've not had any complaints with Athens. In fact, with bulk pickup, it's pretty easy to schedule a pickup for that. They're really good at it. There's no real cost to that. In fact, I met with one of their new reps for their area, Jonathan. We had a nice chat and everything of that nature. So if there's anything that anyone has, any issues with Athens, with some of these situations, call the city, reach out to us, and we have access to these folks, and we can resolve any of these issues. They're really good to work with, and it's pretty simple to work for and work with as well. So there shouldn't be any issues at all. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Karen was very nice and hit the subject of the Trails Day at Big Dalton Canyon this weekend. So 8:00 in the morning, sturdy shoes, a pair of gloves, and a willingness to go see our trails and lean in a little bit will be welcomed. Regarding some of the transit issues, I've been watching and asking and getting favorable answers. I don't think I'm being misled, but so far, with the opening of the A-line Metro Line in Glendora, we've not had any issues or events. It's been very favorable. The ambassadors that are there, and there are ambassadors every day. I check frequently through the week, and I can typically find three to five at a given time. They're not armed, they're not in uniforms, but they are wearing a bright-colored safety vest and can be easily identified, more than willing to help all of us, young and old, navigate the process of having an enjoyable trip. So that is there. I have also noticed, without reason to be there other than they're just keeping an eye out on our behalf, county public safety and our own city public safety stopping through the station periodically to make sure that things are, in fact, the way we expect them to be. So pleased to report that. That, I don't have any other items, other than please be cautious if you're out this Friday for trick-or-treating. If you're driving, slow down and turn on your lights, and let's not have to call the police for any unfavorable event. Be safe and have a good time. With that, I'll bring it back. City manager, city attorney, any questions, comments? Thank you, ladies. That brings us to a special item, a proclamation proclaiming October 23 through 31, 2025 as Red Ribbon Week. And making this presentation is Mayor Pro Tem Michael Alawas. Sir.
Thank you, David. And the school resource officers, Albert Arguda and Crystal Goings. Are you folks here? Come on up. So whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that viable unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is responsible for the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to having a drug-free lifestyle. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23 through the 31st. And whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth, did I miss anybody? Will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing, displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. We all have red up here. You can tell. We're all stylish tonight. Whereas the theme Red Ribbon Week is a life is a puzzle solved, solve it is, life is a puzzle, solve it drug-free. Whereas the City of Glendora further commits its resources to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Campaign. Therefore, now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Glendora, do hereby proclaim the week of October 23 through the 31st, 2025, as Red Ribbon Week in Glendora, California, and encourage everyone to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to drug-free communities. In witness hereof, the mayor has set his hand and caused the seal of the City of Glendora to be affixed this 28th day of October, 2025. Let's see here.
All right. Thank you guys so much for having us here and for celebrating Red Ribbon Week. Officer Goins couldn't be here, so I invited Police Explorer Gabriel Furman, who's a student over at Glendora High School, as well as a police explorer, and he's on the football team and everything. So as a way to celebrate just our partnership between Glendora Police Department, City of Glendora, and the youth, I really appreciate you guys inviting us here to celebrate Red Ribbon Week. The last two days I've spent at the high school in health classes, teaching about everything from controlled substances to alcohol abuse, as well as even vaping. And really, Red Ribbon Week is about teaching our youth to make good choices. And it's cool to see, from when I was a student, Red Ribbon Week still living on in tradition and us trying to empower our youth to make good choices. So I'm proud to represent GPD and being an SRO and Police Explorer advisor, and here to accept this from you guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for supporting the good cause and leading the charge. Okay, that brings us to public hearings. And our first public hearing this evening is a hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending Title 21, the zoning of the Glendora Municipal Code to establish objective design standards and streamline existing regulations in alignment with the city's adopted housing element and state law. And presenting this evening is Principal Planner Hans Friedel. And he brought his able-bodied assistant with him that's quite capable. So welcome, Hans, and lead the way.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Make sure I've got my controls working here. So pleased to be here tonight. After a nearly three-year effort seeking approval of our new objective design standards, I know the ordinance is a mouthful and the attendant comprehensive cleanup of the Glendora Zoning Code related really to design things. So tonight, I am joined by Alan Loomis of Placeworks, who's been our consultant on this project. And so, yeah. So, you know, for some background, you know, there's a plethora of state housing laws, including SB 35, SB 330, SB 9, ADU law, density bonus law, et cetera, et cetera. Essentially, if it's something the state cares about and wants to see built, then the state of California requires local agencies to have objective design standards for those qualifying residential mixed-use developments that apply for something under these laws or invoke those laws. California Government Code, Section 66300, defines objective design standards as "design standard that involves no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and is uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official before submission of an application." So objective standards are written as requirements rather than guidelines. Here's just a table that again shows some of those many laws that reference objective standards. But again, it's 35, SB 330, ADU stuff, SB 6, 2011. Density bonus is a big one. Emergency shelter laws, et cetera. So, you know, an example of a subjective guideline would be, you know, vehicles should be concealed from view through a combination of screen walls and plantings. And this is something I found from our, one of our corridor plans. The design of varied roof and skyline forms is encouraged. So again, it's subjective. It does not have the teeth of an objective requirement. Examples of objective standard would be vehicles must be concealed from view through a combination of screen walls and plantings, or roof lines must not extend horizontally more than X number of feet without incorporating a variation in height of at least three feet. So again, it's something quantifiable. In addition to the state requirements, the ODS was driven by local directives as well. So, you know, the first one I'll mention is the housing element. The city's adopted and certified six-cycle housing element contains Program 16, Action Item 24, which commits the city to revise design guidelines to be objective and remove language requiring interpretation of design quality. Glendora's 2023 to 2025 Strategic Plan, Goal 1, Objective 5, Task 3, is to develop objective design standards under the Housing Element Follow-Up Section. Glendora's current strategic plan, the 2025 to 2027 one, adopted this year under Goal 1 Suburban Living, includes Action Item 111, again, committing us to develop objective design standards. Kind of going a step further, the Economic Development Action Plan outlines business retention and attraction goals, including providing non-monetary incentives such as streamlined permitting and fast-track entitlement reviews. So these efforts aim to reduce the complexity and time involved in starting or expanding businesses in targeted sectors and locations. So that goes to a lot of the, you know, objective design standards help with that, having clear standards. And also, some of the cleanup of our code will help with that as well. So Glendora's current code, zoning code, contains a mix of different guidelines, standards, and in some cases, none. Different guidelines apply to the same development types in different areas of the city that are otherwise similar. So for example, you may have one set of guidelines for an apartment building on Route 66 and another on Arrow Highway, and maybe yet another for another part of the city. This is complicated for applicants and staff to administer, as you can imagine. This effort also includes a, you know, comprehensive cleanup of our existing code, which I mentioned, and of those different standards, sort of consolidating those into one set of design standards. So in terms of guiding principles, one is to develop clear, simple, and easy-to-administer standards. Two is to streamline and consolidate existing regulations. Three was to establish a clear, consistent, and uniform benchmark. Four was to reduce excessive applicant and staff interactions. Five is to use what I've called a reverse pyramid approach, which is the more complicated regulations are reserved for larger developments that have deeper design teams or benches, and for less high-frequency, sort of lower-complexity developments like single-family houses, ADUs, et cetera, to have clearer, simpler standards. Because oftentimes, it would be a contractor or homeowner or something leading that effort, and they're not going to have a, you know, a team of architects and engineers and things like that. Six is to implement a cafeteria approach with giving applicants a menu of choices in the code, e.g., they have buy-in. They get to select two of the following three options. So there's some flexibility. So when they're applying these, it doesn't force you into just one thing. You have different, a menu of options, so to speak, to choose from in terms of meeting the intent and your, the requirements of your architectural style that you've chosen. And seven, of course, be compliant with state law. So in terms of public engagement, I'll briefly go through this again. The ODS went through a years-long, multifaceted public engagement effort, including multiple planning commission and city council check-ins, an online and in-person survey launched back in 2024 that generated nearly, it was like 560, nearly 600 responses, which is an outstanding number for a city of our size. Open houses, stakeholder interviews, and then a developer and architect roundtable, which to review the code, and that's, again, sort of subject matter experts and people that have applied at the city, to sort of look at what's going to be regulating them and provide us feedback on it. And much of that feedback, we incorporated in this version before you tonight. So many suggestions are now worked into it. And then this all culminated in a joint planning commission and city council meeting back in August, I guess about two months ago now, where we received some very specific feedback on limiting architectural styles, especially for large multifamily. Removing, and that includes removing the modern farmhouse as a style, which we did. Adding enhanced top-edge treatments for roofs, so like with overhangs, meatwalls. For feedback we received, we've now included that for awnings and moldings for the different architectural styles. And then also being consistent with both fire safety best practices and aesthetic concerns over wood durability on deck elements, especially for larger developments like multifamily, commercial, et cetera. So we've made changes to sort of prohibit unfinished wood as a structural element and larger development types. And Alan can talk a little bit more about that as he goes through the contents of the code itself. So again, this goes all the way back to August of 2023 when we had our kickoff meeting. And, you know, now here we are tonight after a planning commission a couple weeks ago. So again, I just mentioned this, got ahead of myself. But again, during that joint meeting we had, which was really to review these in depth, you know, again, we reduced the architectural styles, and there's a table which I will show. So this is something we've actually added to the code. So this is something we've actually added to the code now, and it will be in the user's guide as well, which will get updated. And it's kind of like a policy document, sort of explaining the code in graphical format. But this again shows, so as you can see in the for large multifamily, which is kind of like right in the middle of the table, the column sort of in the, actually exactly in the middle, only craftsmen in Spanish are the allowed styles on that. Again, as we'd mentioned, there is this pathway for applicants to propose alternative styles. But then it goes through a development plan review process where the Planning Commission becomes sort of like the Architectural Review Board then for them at that point. So if there's something we haven't listed. But here we have two. And then the modern farmhouse is not even on there anymore. So this sort of shows you which types are available for different houses. And then again, this really kind of shows a little bit of that reverse pyramid thing. You can see for some of the smaller developments, like single-family, there's a little more flexibility. Small, multi-mixed-use and small multifamily has a little more as well. So with that, I think I'll hand it off to Alan to go through the contents of the ordinance, and then I'll be back at the conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Hans. Council members, a pleasure to be back in front of you on this topic. So to go through what the objective design standards cover, one of the things that's very important to say upfront is that they do not override or change any of your existing development standards that you have, especially those related to allowable density, allowable uses, and kind of overall height and general setbacks. All of that that exists in your zoning code remains in effect. The objective design standards do not change that at all. They supplement those development standards with additional design direction. Also, we don't have up here, but it's important to note too, that they do not change or supersede any of your building and safety and fire codes that are constantly being updated by the state. I believe you have something on the agenda later tonight associated with that. All that continues to work. So basic life safety codes are still being addressed the way they are today. What the objective design standards do is they supplement those existing codes with additional things on the design topics that typically get adjudicated in front of a Planning Commission and are the topics of most architects' kind of passions, which is issues of site planning, open space, particularly amenities within multifamily developments, kind of weight building entrances based out onto the street and a sidewalk, how windows, whether they're recessed, how their pattern, that sort of stuff, materials, colors. And then, as Hans mentioned, in Glendora, we are also limiting the architectural styles that are allowed within the city outside of that development review process that Hans mentioned. Unique to Glendora, compared to most cities that are adopting objective design standards, this will apply to all development types. So from an economic development standpoint, you're kind of providing the same clear pathway for commercial development as you're providing for multifamily development, and also providing clear guidance to owners of single-family homes who want to build new single-family homes. You know, I would say, you know, the state has told you you must do all these things to expedite multifamily development. But apparently, they don't care if it takes you 10 years to get a car dealership approved. But in Glendora, the car dealership will have that same benefit that you're obligated to provide for affordable housing development through the objective design standards. As Hans mentioned, our general approach to crafting these standards was to build a menu that says, "You must have height modulation, but there are five different ways you might achieve that." So applicants have a great deal of choice in how they meet the standards. Those five ways are all quantified, however. So there's not going to be an argument about whether they did number A, letter A, or letter C. It means that hopefully, that won't result in a kind of cookie-cutter approach to architecture in the city. It'll be a lot of diversity and allow applicants and architects to respond to unique site conditions, because not every property in the city is the same. A number of the standards do overlap. That is by design, and that is intentional. So you can see here, for example, under general facade articulation, we say you must achieve one of the four of the following. And you can see the list there of what those are. Later on, you'll find standards related to how to articulate and kind of call out primary entrances to buildings. And you can see you must meet two of the following. And you can see there's some overlap there. So creative architects are going to be able to realize that, you know, as they work their way through the standards, they can sort of align different standards together, and they're going to be able to meet a lot of the detailed design standards with an efficient design that is very thoughtful on how they apply the various different elements that we've offered them in this menu approach. As we mentioned, we're going to cover all the building types that generally you're going to see in the city. So starting with single-family. As Hans mentioned, we tried to be fairly simple, and the obligations are kind of standards we would impose on single-family houses. And this only applies to new single-family. If you're modifying or kind of upgrading the windows on your existing home, the standards won't kick in. So general maintenance doesn't have to address, attend to these standards. And this diagram here shows virtually all the design standards we have for single-family development. So the average person who's building a house, who wants to make their house look attractive and fit into the neighborhood, is likely going to do virtually all these things just to make their home attractive. So they shouldn't have a huge hurdle in meeting the development standards. Of course, what we do see is a lot of larger developments where you have multiple single-family homes on one lot, done by commercial developers. They would also have to meet these standards as well. We paid a lot of attention to multifamily development at two different scales, 10 units and less, and then 11 units and above. The standards largely focus on the question of open space and amenities. Again, as we think about amenities in multifamily developments, we provide a menu. How many amenities you're required to provide scales up as the number of units increase in a project. So small multifamily projects, like five units, have very few common amenities they're obligated to provide. But once you get into, say, a 50-unit development, that number goes up. But there's also a diverse menu of options from swimming pools to, you know, gymnasiums, to play areas, to dog runs, et cetera, that an applicant can choose from. So again, an applicant, developer, architect can kind of tailor their, how they're meeting the standards to the particular way they're going to market that project or the particular community or kind of demographic they're intending to bring into that new community. We address large multifamily and large mixed-use development. And we, in fact, kind of anticipate buildings or the possibility of buildings coming to the city that exceed your existing standards in your zoning code. The reason for this, we'll touch on this later, is that with all the state density bonus laws, there's always the possibility that a developer can essentially build taller than your current building code allows by invoking various affordable density bonuses and waivers. And so at that point, the objective design standards start to give you, as a city and your staff, some tools to regulate the shape of that building as it exceeds your building code. Otherwise, you'd be sort of left defenseless, if you will. So we do have drawings like this that are much bigger than the scale of buildings that I know everyone in Glendora, or most people in Glendora, would like to see. Commercial development, we address. It's really focused on the design of storefronts. And in the Village, which is defined as a particular length of Glendora Avenue, we require a kind of more glass and more transparency into the storefronts than we do elsewhere in the city. Because in the Village, you're walking right up against those storefronts, whereas in other parts of the city and the commercial corridors, you're often approaching the buildings across from a parking lot. So on the question of architectural styles, we'll run through these alphabetically, which is how they're presented in the code. Craftsman, very, very well-known, very diverse style here in Glendora. So this is, when we did the survey, this is probably the most popular style for multifamily development, which I don't think surprised any of us on the project team. The Googie architecture style, maybe not as well-known. This is Googie, not Google. It's named after a restaurant on Sunset Boulevard in West Hollywood. And it's the kind of historic Route 66 architecture, the kind of café, the big boys', shakers' kind of style. And so we're permitting or kind of requiring that, or allowing that, I should say, only on Route 66 and Arrow Highway. And it only applies to commercial development and small multifamily development. The example on the right is bigger than the small multifamily development we're anticipating. But we put it in there as an illustration that you do see some developments where they take over the site of an old coffee shop to build a multifamily structure that sort of evokes that Route 66 sort of aesthetic. The Main Street architecture, we know very, very well. That's essentially what you see in the Village and other similar main streets throughout the United States. The postmodern style is the kind of reductive style that became popular in late, kind of in, you know, after World War II, is, still remains a kind of popular style by architects today. It's one in which the ornament and the details are sort of very, very minimal. It is the style that you see in a lot of kind of contemporary retail centers. So we provide that for that particular option, because this is the preferred style for a lot of commercial development, as well as some multifamily, in these illustrations. And then lastly, the Spanish Revival style, which is incredibly robust. I would argue that the decision that the Council and Planning Commission made to sort of steer larger development towards either craftsmen or Spanish Revival is a very wise one. In my opinion, the Spanish Revival style is the most forgiving to bad architects, because there's so many things you can do with it. And so for the larger buildings, they will probably gravitate to Spanish Revival and some to craftsmen. But Spanish Revival has a lot of possibilities, and it's a very robust style that can deal with very large buildings, down to single-family and commercial and industrial and everything in between. We have provided, in addition to the code itself, which is complex, as Hans mentioned, we're happy that we got it exactly 300 pages. We thought somewhere in all of this, the ordinance, the magic number was going to be under 300 pages. But we've also provided a user's guide that's robustly illustrated, that's intended to be a staff handout at the counter or online to allow people who come in with typical applications to begin to understand how they navigate the user's guide. All the architectural styles are kind of described there, as well as a checklist, so that applicants can go through a checklist. And one of the council members had asked, like, could that be done in the future? So there is a checklist for applicants and staff alike to use as projects come through. So all that being said, and everything Hans described this and why it's a 300-page ordinance is because we were taking elements from your zoning code, different chapters of your zoning code, pieces of the Arrow Highway specific plan and pieces of the Route 66 corridor specific plan, editing, synthesizing those, and pulling them together and apart, and rekind of positioning them into two sections of the zoning code. One is Chapter 2115, which is the objective design standards themselves. But then there was some substantive reorganization and rewriting of pieces of 2103, which is general regulations, which covers things like landscaping, utilities, trash enclosures, lighting, parking lot design, et cetera. And that applies citywide. So we felt like a lot of those standards really belong in that citywide piece of the zoning code and kind of peppered throughout the objective design standards, which are geared towards those individual building typologies, single-family, multifamily, commercial. So the last thing, I kind of briefly touched on this, which is that with the state density laws, developers who come forward with affordable housing projects, multifamily housing, are entitled to a limited number of exceptions and waivers to your zoning code. The number of those exceptions and waivers depends on the kind of provisions, how much affordable housing they're providing. You know, but they are entitled to that sort of pathway. And what we have seen in some cities have adopted their objective design standards as a kind of independent document outside of their zoning code that, and their amendment to the zoning code says, "Go see our objective design standards." Those cities, we think, and they think, and some of them are also starting to think of this, are at risk that one of those waivers is that reference line. We request a waiver from the reference to your entire objective design standards. What we've done here in Glendora, by interweaving all of this into your zoning code, our position is that you could not waive yourself away. As a developer, you would not be able to waive the entirety of the objective design standards. You'd have to go through it line by line and decide, would I like to waive my, the standards associated with the dimensions and design standards of balconies or the ones related to amenities? I'd like to do both. Well, now I have two waivers from the code. So we think that this is, does not allow a developer to carte blanche walk away from the objective design standards. And in short, gives the city a lot greater protection that the design standards will be implemented should a developer come in and request all those, any sort of waivers or exceptions from your code on account of providing affordable housing in their development. So with that, I'll turn it back to Hans to conclude.
Thank you, Alan. And just a few more comments here. So I'll give the Planning Commission recommended approval of the ordinance to City Council through a hearing on October 7th, with a few changes, which, again, I mentioned, we sort of beefed up the standards for roof overhangs. So we call it top-edge treatment, and then sort of molding on flat roofs. And that also included some enhanced sort of standards for, related to prohibiting unfinished wood for structural components or wood treatments for structural components of balconies, decks, et cetera, in multifamily, larger developments. So in conclusion, this is, you know, the wrap-up, if I said, of basically a three-year effort, you know, with lots of public engagement, surveys, meetings, open houses, you know, stakeholder and industry-specific involvement. And I think many Planning Commission and City Council updates in a joint meeting. So we've given some version of this presentation. This might be the third time I've done it. So hopefully, it doesn't feel like 18 innings. The result, we believe, is an ordinance that is both flexible enough to allow the market to function and development to occur, while enforcing aesthetic standards that reflect Glendora's community preferences that we heard in the survey, and of course, be compliant with state law to the maximum extent we can. So, and again, as Alan said, protect ourselves, you know, from sort of carte blanche waivers of all of our ODS standards for development, which we don't want. So this concludes my presentation, and thank you.
Thank you, Hans, and thank you, Alan. Always a pleasure. For the record, Alan's in one of the pictures of the general meeting, so he'll be in perpetuity for us. Welcome. Well, with that, I will open the public testimony period and invite members of the public to speak on this item only. If you're in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording admin. You will be recognized and asked to come up and speak. You will be limited to three minutes on this item only. So with that, Madam Clerk, do we have any requested speakers?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Last call? All right, very good. Then I will close the public comment period and bring it back to council for questions and deliberation discussion. With that, I'll begin with Shawna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Hans, and Alan, and the whole team for a long process and all your hard work during it. I don't have any questions, but I do, I don't have any questions because I feel like we have gone through a lot of engagement with this process, most recently, our joint session with the Planning Commission. You answered all my questions at that time, but I think you hit the nail on the head. It is flexible and enforces the aesthetic standards that we expect in Glendora. So I think you're spot on. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shawna. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And Hans, you've done, and you and your team have done an amazing job. 36 months. I'm sure you have nightmares, you have dreams, you have all kinds of things that enter your head about this thing. And you've done a really good, good job. Thank you for August 28th, where the public was able to come and hear in depth the kind of report that you were able to quickly give here. And questions were asked, and thoughts were shared. And I really appreciate the way that the team has incorporated everything that, or most everything that you heard that night into this plan now. Just a real quick, quick thing to ask. So for homes, there are five standards? Or are there seven?
Are we talking about the styles?
Yeah, the styles.
I'll go back to the table here real quick. So for like a single-family house?
Yeah, yeah.
It would be, it's the four on here. It's the craftsmen, mid-century, ranch, and Spanish.
Okay, and then from a business standpoint, there's...
On the commercial side?
Yeah.
There's these, it's six, so it's everything but ranch style.
Okay, okay.
It's on, it's listed. So it's craftsmen, Googie, Main Street, mid-century, postmodern, ranch, and Spanish, for the record.
I saw that list, and I think that's a really important list that you shared, I saw that list, and I think that's a really important list that you shared because a number of people that spoke that night, I think, expressed that they wanted it to kind of shrink down, but not be super small, but at least not be, have 10 or 12. And I think you guys have done a really good job there. I'm going to support this, and I applaud you for giving the option to those that want to kind of chart their own course, to at least have that, and I always think that that's good. I think choice is always good, and I think you've just done a great job. So I've heard it now about three or four times, and all of the questions that I've ever had have, you know, you have heard and been able to answer, so thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. Karen?
Thank you. The answer is 19. Nineteen innings. No. You've been very transparent, you have provided a lot of information, so in the spirit of Freddie Freeman, let's wrap this up and move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Michael?
Thank you again for all the work. It's a long process, as my colleagues have mentioned. Just have a couple of quick questions. As far as, I don't know if it's on this one here, I didn't see it, but on our regular design setbacks for, like, second, third, and fourth stories, do we have that, so it doesn't look such a massive building? Are there any requirements for that?
So, Alan, you may want to jump in on this, if you're looking it up in the specific section. I think we have transitions to single-family houses, so when a tall edge meets that, then there's enhanced stepbacks on those edges to single-family, not on, not replacing the basic setbacks along Main Streets and stuff. It talks about transitions to single-family homes. So if you've got the exact standard pull-up, I think it sets the second or third floor back.
Yeah, exactly. As it relates to buildings that are adjacent, properties that are adjacent to single-family home, there is a list of criteria about being set back, and then...
Within 50 feet.
Yeah, within 50 feet, but there are also then, when it comes to height modulation for buildings that are taller...
I can pull the picture here.
Sorry, I'm finding the exact reference in that. I'll come back to you, but I believe we also have under the list of height modulation, stepbacks, or building, modulating the building height.
Well, then, as you're looking for that, the other question that I have is, you mentioned just a few minutes ago about waivers. I know we have another hearing after this one here, actually, this one, actually, two more. There's, they could have done unlimited waivers with what they had proposed, so there is a way that basically all of this can be superfluous with unlimited waivers, correct?
Well, some of that might be, look at the attorney's office.
Yeah, it becomes a legal issue where it's whether the waiver that is proposed to be, that is requested by the developer, that is proposed to be denied by the city, would physically preclude the ability of the developer to provide for the affordable units that are proposed. So it becomes a complicated legal issue, and, but there are requirements for, there are requirements in state law that the city generally defers to the developer's determination. City can no longer request a financial report from the developer confirming their, that their requested waiver would preclude the, would preclude their ability to provide the affordable units. So it's, it gets into complications with respect to each particular housing development.
So basically, it is a possibility, but it's a long road.
It is a possibility, yeah.
Okay. Last question I have, while you're still looking for that, is mentioned about on page 13 on the presentation, how does the second bullet point cite planning, open space, and circulation come into play when high density is introduced?
I'm going to answer that one.
Last question.
Yeah, and I'm finding...
In terms, if you brought a little more clarification, council member, is that in terms of bonus law that we just talked about, or is it in terms of...
It's all of it, with all the housing laws, that we still don't know how they overlap, interlap, and all of that.
Yeah, so same answer applies.
Anything can happen.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you. Did you find it?
Yeah, let me answer the question on the amenities. So regardless of, as I mentioned, as the building scales up or require more amenities, so the larger developments would require more amenities, but there's a fairly lengthy list, so they would have to accept out of, like, providing those amenities, they would have to pull that as one of their exceptions to not provide the full list of amenities, but that might come at the expense of other exceptions that might make the building work for them in other ways, like reducing...
Unless they're allowed to waive all of it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, delighted to be looking for this here. It's what a, I'm used to using the find function on the 300-page ordinance, so it's under, let me see if I can find the section just for the reference here for everybody. So I'm looking at residential, so it's 2115060. Apologize, I can't pull it up on the screen, but this illustration actually does a nice job of it. Residential, multifamily, 11 units or more, under, it's going to be C3, which is transitional massing to detached residential. So it basically says, "Buildings located within 50 feet of a single-family or hillside residential area must comply with the following things." And it says, "So required setbacks abutting street don't count towards this, this open space." It says, "Within 50 feet of adjacent low-rise residential areas," which is like single-family houses. "New multifamily or mixed-use development shall not exceed a height of 35 feet." So it's like an extra standard, which is getting pretty close to the height of a single-family house, so it keeps them lower. So what you would get is like in this picture, it's this transitional massing roofline variation, so up against a busier street, I'm kind of looking over my shoulder, you have a normal setback. But yeah, where he's, where Alan's pointing, and imagine there's houses there that are single-family, it sort of does the New York thing, and it steps back, so they don't have a big vertical wall hanging over them. The other things that it does is windows must be offset by at least one foot from any windows in adjacent low-rise residential, so unlike the, my house, I actually look right on one side, look into my neighbor's house, then on the other side, I look into their house, so we can all see each other and wave. We require the windows to be a little bit offset like this, so they don't, you're not looking right into your neighbor's house. That's another privacy kind of concern. And then finally, balconies and decks may not extend into setbacks abutting low-rise residential neighborhoods. You don't have, like, someone's big multifamily deck kind of hanging out over your yard or something like that, so you'll be subject to whatever the setback is. Other things, we allow sort of a little bit of the deck to encroach a little bit into that setback. So those are the things we have in here for that transitional massing.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. A few questions.
Mr. Mayor, can I just interject one thing before we get off of this? Just to, like, not scare people, I think it's important to point out that a backstop towards, like, unlimited waivers is the fact that these developers need to either sell or lease these units, and so I don't think that, you know, like a carte blanche, you know, build of just, like, let's see if we can waive everything. I just don't think it's realistic, like, maybe theoretically it could happen. I think the market will be the buffer for that not happening. Just my two cents.
Okay, thank you for that. Real time, that's good. Thank you both. As you're aware, you know, I've got several items that were kind of bullet-pointed items that I was concerned on, and I think we hit them very well on the top-edge treatments. Appreciate that. We'll caution, though, there's a, you did a picture of a postmodern. Kind of neat.
Let me see if I can pull it up. Was it in the styles, like these?
Yeah, yeah, keep going. That's it, perfect. Back up. Okay.
I'm alphabet.
While the style's interesting, I think in that case, there's no top-edge treatment on those, and that would, I would hope, pick up some of that edge treatment, moldings, something along the way, so that's not the example of what we intend from our design standard, right?
No, it's not, Mayor.
The one on the left is a little better than the one on the right.
One of the things I'll mention is that in the, I don't know if I mentioned this in my presentation, but in the user's guide, so that's intended to, a couple of things. The code that you have tonight, the...
User's guide.
Yeah, the illustrations have been updated from the line drawings in the, in the presentation tonight, to have more of those, like, awnings and eaves and top-edge treatments to reflect what the code says. Also, that we're not adopting the user's guide, but the code. The user's guide after tonight, because we have, you know, we wanted to see what the outcome of tonight's meeting was, we will then, and the user's guide can also be updated as we get questions at the counter, or things are unclear for applicants, we can make refinements to the checklist, the user's guide to sort of, you know, explain the code. The pictures that we have here, that will go in the user's guide, we'll find pictures and graphics that illustrate the standards as best as we can.
Excellent, thank you, because that was one of my comments, was the user's guide, as I see it today, is showing examples of things that may not be exactly what we were hoping for, and it conflicts with the wording, and I just want to keep us away from that arm wrestle down the road. Well, your picture shows this is okay, but the words say something different, so. Excellent, thank you. I also appreciate the effort to continue the four-sided architecture. I think that's very important, so that the side yards and backyards don't look discounted and undone, but rather have the same love that the face got, so that's, I appreciate that very much. And some of that wording on the side edges, on the rolled tiles, and you've addressed that clearly, so thank you. I have a parking question. If I have a designated handicap space, and I have a designated EV space, electric vehicle space, I may or may not be on private property, is the user obligated to be either, I think the answer is yes, but handicap declared with a placard to use that space, and if it's an EV space, is that space only for electric vehicles and to be charged while there, and empty if no one's using it, or what's, how's that work?
Well, again, the, so a couple of things, and I might look to Jeff or Attorney's Office on some of these answers, but the, these standards, the guy that are designed, don't replace our off-street parking standards, so some of this comes to whether parking's on public or private property, but ADA spaces are for ADA vehicles showing the placard.
Understood.
Now, if somebody parks a gasoline-powered car in an EV space, I'll...
Yeah, and so, so with respect to the zoning code, the zoning code in general, or any zoning regulation, ADA parking is not a part of that. The zoning code, planning does, planning does not regulate that as part of its review. It is part of the building code, so I don't want to speak out of turn on that because I'm not the expert on the building code, but questions about, so the question, I think I understood, so if you have an ADA parking space on a piece of property, and it's, well, I think your question is if you have an EV parking space on a piece of...
Well, both. If I have an ADA space, respect says you don't use it unless you're legitimately able to, because you have a license plate or a placard or some declaration of need, okay? But on EV space, what, how does that work? If I have an EV space available in my project or on my property, can I use it if I'm a non-electric vehicle? Or is there a mandate?
That I don't know the answer to.
Are we talking about a private development, or are we talking about an HOA? So a lot of times, the HOA rules, regulations would handle that, yeah.
Okay, in HOA, obviously, just in a shopping center or something, and I'm not even sure. I'm respectful, so I don't pull into an EV space with my gas hog, so I don't, I don't know what would happen.
Typically, that'd be a private party enforcement, unless there was somehow public streets, and then we could have that conversation, but typically, that private property is sort of the HOA, and I know the city attorney here will weigh in, but typically, the private property is the HOA's responsibility.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any state law that allows for fines to be imposed on a car that's parked in an EV space, like a, like the normal disability space, that allows the city police or anything to cite you for that, but it can be enforceable by an HOA or, or by, you know, the private developer that owns the lot.
And ADA violations are enforceable.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty clear. Okay.
As a general rule, I wouldn't park in an ADA space. I mean, I think most people know they're not supposed to do that, right?
I agree. I, I, you know, my mother trained me better, so that's, before ADA spaces existed. Okay, and you addressed the concern about fine-tuning the user's manual to make sure that all of a sudden that's, addresses that. Okay, thank you very much. Alan, we'll miss you if you're, if this project ever gets done, but that's, I have no other questions or comments. Anyone else? Mendel?
You know, I think it would be good for people to, you know, understand that this meeting, the agenda and ancillary paperwork, Danny, you're going to have to flex here. Would you hold up your book? There's over 1,500 pages that the council was expected to absorb and read. 300 of that was just on this, just on Hans.
Just the ordinance.
Just the ordinance. And so when we say thank you, it's, it's been a big job, and then in the next day or two, some social media sites will poke at whatever they want to poke at. Just understand that this is a big, big thing, and, and we've all taken time to read and summarize and ask staff and each other things to the extent that we can, and I just think that the public needs to understand that there's a lot we're going to be talking about tonight, and that is a reflection of everything that we're, you know, we're going to be talking about, and Hans, you are the one that's kicking this thing off, so you can be proud of, of the 300 pages that you, that you, that you took up, so thank you.
Thank you. A lot of help.
Thank you, Mendel.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Other questions, comments? I think I hear a motion coming.
Yes, I am making a motion that we approve items one, two, and three.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Davis and a second by Mr. Thompson. Invite us to please vote. There's the ballot. Your motion carried 5-0. Thank you very much, and well done. All right. Brings us to item number six, another public hearing, and this one is to consider a resolution adopting an update to the general plan safety element, PLN 22-0043. And, oh, it looks like it's the Hans show tonight, so, okay, welcome back, Principal Planner Hans Friedl, to share with us, and he brought his able-bodied consultant from De novo Planning Group, Perry Banner, to help carry along, so. Hans, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so good evening once again, and I'm here tonight to request approval of an update to our general plan safety element. I'm joined by our consultant, Perry Banner, of De novo Planning Group, to jointly present this item. So just for some background, in California, a safety element is a required component of a city or county's general plan, really identifies the natural and human-caused hazards that might impact a community in one place, and then outlines some goals and policies to protect the community from the risks of those natural and human-caused hazards identified in that document. These include things like wildfires, typical stuff, seismic, landslides, some things that are less common, toxic spills, et cetera. The safety element's purpose is to then integrate safety considerations into land use and transportation planning, reducing potential deaths, injuries, property damage, and, you know, the economic dislocation that could be caused by these potential hazards. So, you know, for some more background, cities must adopt, you know, a general plan, and this is the comprehensive vision for a community's growth, development, and sustainability. Includes eight mandatory elements in California, plus there's optional ones as well, but the mandatory ones are land use, circulation, housing, which is a big one, conservation, open space, noise, safety, and environmental justice. So in 2022, the city adopted its six-cycle housing element, covering a period of 2021 to 2029, which we talk about often, and the state subsequently certified that. State law requires local governments to review and update their safety element concurrently with the housing element, to address hazards such as wildfires, floods, and climate change, you know, which I've mentioned. So this ensures that hazard planning is then integrated with the sort of long-term community development thoughts that are happening and policies, including things like housing, and it's codified in government code 65302G. So it's a key takeaway, the housing and safety are both required elements of Glendora's general plan, and each housing element update triggers a review of the safety element. So... each housing element update triggers a review of the safety element. So, the current safety element we have was last updated in 2015, which coincided with the previous housing cycle. Our request for proposals to update the safety element was always scoped to be a light update of the document, not a complete overhaul. It was contracted to be run in tandem with the, which is a more rigorous process, the local hazard mitigation planning process, which is outlined by the state and FEMA. So, this is more of a refresh to bring the document into compliance with changes to state law, and to be consistent with the LHMP and our housing element. Several state mandates guide safety element content. So, there's SB 1241, which requires jurisdictions and state responsible to areas with very high fire hazard severity zones, which we talk about quite a bit, to address and consider wildfires. The city's safety element was analyzing using the CAL FIRE safety element assessment, and reviewed by CAL FIRE itself, and the Board of Forestry, which approved it. SB 379 and SB 1035 require assessing climate change vulnerability, and adopting adaptation, resilience goals, policies, and implementation measures. So, we reviewed our current one for that, those. AB 747 requires identifying evacuation routes, and evaluating their capacity, safety, and viability under a range of emergency scenarios. And SB 99 requires identifying residential developments in hazard areas that lack at least two emergency evacuation routes. So, kind of a high-level overview, and Perry will go through this a little bit more of what's changed and what's sort of stayed the same. The safety element maintains existing goals, policies, and actions with some targeted modifications. It adds information and references to related city and county plans and programs, including the city's local hazard mitigation plan, which is being worked on, adds new policies and actions related to fire. The fire hazard maps were updated during this process. Includes an analysis of emergency evacuation routes for residential areas, and high, high hazard zones as required by SB 99. Adds new policies and actions related to emergency preparedness. Includes climate vulnerability assessment as an addendum to identify, or appendix, to identify why, where, when, and which resources in Glendora may be most at risk due to climate change, and adds new policies and actions on climate change and resilience planning based on that assessment's findings. So, as I mentioned, the safety element update was run concurrently with the required update to our local hazard mitigation plan. That's being managed by the police department. Julie's here tonight, if we have questions about that. There's a lot of overlap, why I mentioned that, between the two documents, and it was our intent originally to bring them together to Planning Commission and City Council. You know, adopting a local hazard mitigation plan also triggers a review of the safety element. So, given these interrelationships, the city chose to run them in parallel to avoid reopening the safety element again immediately after we get the LHMP here. The safety element received approval by the California Board of Forestry almost a year ago. Its process sort of stopped at that point. While state certification of the LHMP has taken longer than anticipated, they did finally get it. The two efforts have proceeded substantially in parallel long enough where we've been able to keep them consistent now. Right now, just, so I mentioned it, the local hazard mitigation plan, after getting CAL Office of Emergency Services approval, is now at FEMA for their review. But as we all know, the federal government's been having a little bit of problems being open. So, we don't know when that review's going to happen. And so, that's why we're bringing the safety element now to try to close it out for this year. We will have to update the safety element again comprehensively with the next housing element, which we're now about four years away from. So, we're about halfway through the sixth cycle here. Hence, the sort of timing of getting this to you completed soon, because we'll be looking at a next general plan here pretty soon, and RFP for that. So, I think that kind of talks about the overlap a little bit. I do have this slide here, which, you know, the safety kind of compares them a little bit more closely. So, the safety element identifies risks and vulnerabilities from natural and human-made disasters and other emergency events. The LHMP identifies the local disaster hazards. The safety element establishes strategies for creating a safer and more resilient city. The LHMP goes into assessing the possibility, you know, probability of these hazards occurring, you know, estimates potential costs. Safety element establishes goals, policies, and programs to reduce the short and long-term risks due to hazards that are identified from, you know, the natural and built environment and human. And the LHMP identifies specific actions to mitigate disaster losses. So, that kind of talks about the sort of relationship a little bit more. So, again, for the safety element, we used a multifaceted public engagement effort that overlapped a lot with the local hazard mitigation plan. So, you know, the, the LHMP has to meet these rigorous state and federal FEMA guidelines for public engagement, including targeted engagement. So, they had, and our consultant and Julie can talk about that if you have questions about that. But that process really informed the safety element. So, we were able to sort of piggyback on the LHMP process to get information for the safety element. So, surveys went out in summer of 2023, so two, two-ish years ago now that this was done, included a webpage, social media, a joint survey, which I mentioned. We were at the Prepare Fair Earth Day back in '23 and '24. Technical advisory group meetings, there was a whole bunch that they did for the local hazard mitigation plan, included folks from hospital, school district. I was in some of those. LA County Fire, police, et cetera, colleges, and then various Planning Commission updates. In addition, I want to mention that these also go through inter-agency review as part of the engagement process. So, as you may have noticed, many of the goals and policies relate to things like police and fire services, building code, that sort of stuff, fire code, public safety kind of categories. And so, this combined process received feedback from the P, Police Department, Fire, LA County Fire, of course, and the state of California. So, in addition to the public stuff we did here. And I mentioned that. So, finally, I want to mention that before I hand it to Perry, that the safety element had to get, I should just leave it on this one here, had to get reviewed by CAL FIRE and the Board of Forestry. So, and fire protection. And our draft element was approved at a hearing back in December of '24, so about a year ago. It went to that hearing. In addition, you may notice that the, and this relates to the LHMP, that the resolution has a section about adopting the most recent flood insurance rate map, or FEMA flood maps, a lot of people call them. So, it references adopting the most recent map. And that was, that goes to 2008. These maps are now available and updated online. Cities used to have, like, paper maps. They would keep up on the wall. Every now and then, it happens once a year, somebody comes in asking to see the paper floodplain map for Glendora, and it's all online. So, this ordinance kind of clarifies that. Participation in that program is required to receive FEMA money in the event of a disaster. So, it's pretty important, because it could be a fire. We don't have any flood hazard areas within Glendora, but we do participate in the program. So, so this references the web maps that are updated, and kind of cleans that up, and buttons that up a little bit for Glendora. Hence, that, that was one of the comments that came out of the local hazard mitigation review at the state level. And so, we just included that to kind of help that process out a little bit in the safety element resolution. So, one thing I need to mention before I hand it off to Perry, too, you'll notice that the safety element has two appendices. There's an A, which is the climate vulnerability assessment, which was some of the research that went into those policies. And then Appendix B, which is the SB 99 residential emergency evacuation routes analysis. So, apologies, that, that was not included in the packet, but it is, we've given it to the clerks and provided them. It is paper form to each of you. It is about eight pages long, and it identifies two things, the neighborhoods in Glendora that don't have two points of access. And so, it lists those out for fire. And then it has the maps that fed into the evacuation routes analysis, which is in the safety element. So, the actual fire map, evacuation routes, is in the safety element that you have. So, that's been provided via paper. And with that, I'll hand it over to Perry to talk about what's in the plan.
Thank you, Hans. Welcome, Perry.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. And yes, thank you, Hans. Did a great job of setting the table there. I feel like I'm just going to be providing a little color commentary to his great play-by-play. But as Hans indicated, the, this is, is, this project really was kind of a two, three-pronged project. There was the update to the local hazard mitigation plan, and the update to the safety element. The update to the safety element really being triggered by the update to the housing element that occurred a couple of years ago. And this was intended to be a very kind of targeted surgical update to the safety element, really to ensure that the safety element was meeting recent state legislations, Senate bills, a number of which Hans mentioned, and, and to just bring it up to speed with, with government code. So, is, although the document, if you're comparing it to the existing general plan, or the existing safety element, it, it looks, you know, a little bit different. It's a, a lot of which is cosmetic. But the, we focused really primarily on three areas in the safety element. Wildfire hazards, emergency preparation and response, that had to do with the evacuation routes analysis, and then climate change and resiliency planning, all of which were a function of various Senate bills and legislation that, that required us to update the safety element. In particular, wildfire risk, of course, is something that I'm sure Glendora is very keenly aware of. And that was one of the primary focuses of this project. As Hans mentioned, during this process, the wildfire, or the fire hazard severity maps were actually updated. They were updated actually, we had, after we had the document approved by CAL FIRE, but we still had the opportunity, since we were waiting on the local hazard mitigation plan to catch up, to go and include those new fire hazard severity maps in the, in the safety element. With regard to the, the update to the, as it relates to wildfire in particular, the Board of Forestry and CAL FIRE, they have a process where they have a safety element assessment form that acts as a checklist. They go through the safety element to ensure that it's kind of checking all the boxes with regard to, is this, does a safety element, does it address these issues with wildfires? Does it have policies that are related to evacuation, to mitigation, to hardening of, of a piece of property, and to prevent fires? And so, that checklist really kind of informed the policies that I'll, I'll go over in a minute, and really kind of shaped all those, those, the goals and the policies that you have in the document, were really a function of meeting and hitting all those high points in that CAL FIRE checklist. And so, we, it really, by the time we were able to go to the Board of Forestry, the document was in great shape as far, as far as fire was concerned, and the, the document did get approved. With regard to emergency evacuation routes, Hans mentioned another piece of legislation, SB 99, that required us to do an analysis of the city's residential neighborhoods to determine which residential neighborhoods had multiple points of ingress and egress out of, in and out of the neighborhoods, and which had only one. So, the document that came in paper form, we used GIS analysis to determine where those neighborhoods were. We identified them. They're, they're highlighted on those maps that are in that appendices. And the one thing that I'll, I'll mention is that SB 99 requires the city to identify these neighborhoods, but it's not lost on us that as far as what needs to be done, now that these neighborhoods are identified as having, you know, only one point of ingress and egress in and out of that neighborhood, is that it might be somewhat infeasible to construct a second route in and out of those neighborhoods. But what we're required to do is to identify them. We've developed a policy that then allows us to, well, what kind of mitigation measures can we come up with, if we can't come up with, if it's infeasible to do, like I say, a secondary means of access and egress out of those neighborhoods? What kind of education programs can we have to sort of keep those residents informed of the situation that they're in? Allows the fire department and to police to be aware that those neighborhoods exist in the event of a disaster, that there can be measures in place to help kind of direct some energy towards those, those neighborhoods. So, as far as meeting the requirements of SB 99, and the evacuation routes analysis, we've sort of met all those requirements, and the policy that we have in place will meet the requirements of SB 99. I want, I don't want to re, rather, I won't read these verbatim to you, but just to highlight some of the things that were adjusted as far as key policies with regard to fire hazards, things such as making sure that new development that's proposed, especially in the, the very high fire hazard severity zones, has adequate water pressure to, to meet fire flow requirements, that when we're assessing these, these developments, that there's adequate access for fire department vehicles to get to these properties. We want to evaluate any new development that'll be in those fire hazard severity zones, or even adjacent to the fire hazard severity zones. And then ensuring that these new developments have fire protection plans. And then, as I indicated, that when we identify that there's a neighborhood that only has one or, one access, means of access and egress, that we develop some sort of mitigation measures or improvement plans to sort of address those neighborhoods. As we indicated, we also did a review and an update to goals and policies related to emergency preparedness and evacuation. So, ensuring that the city, for example, has mutual aid agreements with, with other jurisdictions, or at least having a policy that suggests that the city should be preparing for such. A policy on providing educational materials to the, to residents with regard to emergency preparedness, et cetera. And finally, with regard to climate change and addressing another Senate bill, the other appendices that was part of the update to the safety element was the climate vulnerability assessment. That was the first step in addressing these issues with regard to resiliency planning. We did an assessment of where's the city vulnerable in terms of the impacts, or the potential impacts from climate change. No surprise, they had to do with things such as the increased risk of wildfire, the increased risk of drought. Identified who was most vulnerable, the houses, of course, that would be in those high fire hazard severity zones. Identified the, the population that would be most vulnerable. And then, those, those findings then informed the policies, of course, that you have in the, in the safety element. The one thing that I will add is that each city is different with its approach to how it wants to address this particular piece of legislation, how it wants to deal with resiliency planning and climate change. Some cities are more robust, some cities choose to, not that, you know, they've identified the issue, but they have other concerns, of course. You know, the case, in the case of Glendora, you have the risk of wildfire. If you're a coastal community, you might have the, the risk of sea level change. But we feel that, you know, we've identified the issues as they relate to climate change, and have prepared policies with enough flexibility to, to give the city many options with how you want to address climate change. As far as next steps are concerned?
Yeah.
I continue. Sure.
Thank you, Perry. We're wrapping it up here. So, thank you, Perry. Appreciate the presentation of the, the policies. So, just in conclusion, this was at Planning Commission at the last meeting, and they'd voted to recommend adoption. Really, the next thing for us is to get the, you know, pending tonight's outcome, of course, is to get the local hazard mitigation plan process finished up, and that's really kind of at the FEMA stage now. So, whenever that, that happens, and that'll get moving along. And, you know, we have, I want to mention, too, that many of the, the goals and policies in here, you know, in addition to Perry, they, they relate to things like the police department, public safety, public works, fire. So, we, we do, in addition to Perry, have folks from Public Works, the police here tonight, building, community development, et cetera, to help answer questions, if you should have specific ones to one of those areas that's sort of outside of, you know, planning's, planning's typical job duties. So, with that, thank you very much. Thank you, Perry, and thank you, council members.
Okay. Thank you, Hans. Thank you, Perry. At this point, I will declare the public hearing open, and open for public testimony, and invite, do we have any speakers asking to speak on this item?
We do not, Mayor. However, we do have a public testimony that was received earlier today. That item has been incorporated into the agenda packet, distributed to the legislative body, and made available to the public.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then, as such, I will close the public testimony period, bring it back to the council for discussion. Let's see here. Karen? Karen, I'll begin with you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you once again. I think you've probably played more than 19 innings between these two reports, but thank you. No, I think that we are in good hands with the work that you've done, and we know that we have the amazing Julie Linger managing things for us on the emergency services end, so I have full confidence in this and ready to move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mendel?
I would echo that. I have read this, the briefings that I've had on this have answered everything that I needed to know. As I reflect back, the last big event that we had was the Colby Fire, and we performed exceptionally well. Police, fire, everything that the city had, performed well, and I'm confident that this will simply be able to enable us to withstand anything else that comes. So really good job. Thanks, Hans.
Thank you, Mendel. Shawna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Hans. You deserve a nap after today. I would be remiss not to take this opportunity, since we're talking about the safety element, to remind the community about our emergency alert system and how important it is to sign up for those text messages. I see Julie back there. So important, you know, especially in some of these high fire severity zones. Highly recommend that you get signed up for that, even if you don't live in Glendora, but you have maybe family members in Glendora who have mobility issues. So important to get those alerts. So just say that. Quick question, the LHMP, so do we have approval on that yet, or is that like final approval coming? And the reason I'm asking is, are we gonna, if we're doing this now, is it going to like reset once we get approval on that, that we're gonna have to redo this?
So what we deemed on that, that's a great question, and I can let Julie or De novo answer where exactly the local hazard mitigation plan is, but on our end, we had deemed that we have run these, again, I think it was three years, it's almost the same as the objective design, I think it was 2022 that we started this, that they've been run together long enough now where the updates have been made concurrently that whenever FEMA approves their local hazard mitigation plan, that this would be deemed as having been done concurrently with that process.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that because we're like a little bit off now, it's not gonna reset it.
Yeah, she can.
The state has already approved our hazard mitigation plan. It's with FEMA now, and I don't know with the shutdowns, I don't know if that's gonna push things back even farther, but it's been approved by the state. So we are truly just waiting on FEMA.
Okay.
And once FEMA gets approval, we'll be back here to get that approved.
Okay.
And since you're at the mic, Ms. Julie, you want to give the 411 of how people can sign up for that alert?
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, sorry.
Let me grab my phone. Let me grab my phone. I know I should know the number.
While she's getting that, I'll have one more question. Do you, I don't know who would be a good person to answer this, but do we notify residents in these neighborhoods that have only one point of ingress and egress that that's the case? Like, do we have a way to do that? I mean, I sell homes in these areas, and I don't know that I've ever seen a notification on like our natural hazard disclosure report that indicates that, but my colleague right here might like to know that. Have you ever been notified of that?
No, but many of our city's streets have yellow signs saying one way in.
Okay. And that might be worth...
Or no outlet.
Yeah.
Or no outlet.
But I wonder if it's worth making that, like noting that to those residents, like just, you know, for, so they're mindful of it if there's ever a fire? I don't know.
Would think they would know if they live in the area.
You would think, I don't know. Just thinking out loud here, folks.
So we've, one of the steps with the safety element, and we could add them, is to identify them. So we've identified, we know where they are, and then in terms of outreach or education, we could be directed to do something, but now we know where they are in this.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I don't have much else to add.
Available to the public.
Dyslexic. I did not want to give you the wrong number. So the number to text is 67283, and then just text the word Glendora to 67283. And thank you for plugging that because it's super important, super important.
Those are my only questions. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Shawna. Michael?
Thank you, Hans, for your report. There's a lot here to digest. I unfortunately went down the rabbit hole, so I'll try to make this short as best as I can. Do we have a timeframe to implement this with the state?
Well, it's supposed to be done concurrently with the, Perry can help me with this specific time of it. It's supposed to be done concurrently with the adoption of the housing element, so we're, we've been sitting on it, waiting for the local hazard mitigation plan to come along. The idea was to get this done about a year or two ago. So I don't know if there's an actual hard, what side he's on, if there's a hard deadline with state law.
I think what you might be referring to are all the goals and policies and the implementation of those? Is that the question that you have?
Yeah, well, this is an amendment, so is there a timeframe that we have to make this amendment?
Right. No, there's a, there's no hard number for when it has to be adopted. It did get triggered, of course, by the update to the housing element, but there is no period in which you had to do it. I mean, you should be doing it expeditiously, which we are.
Did this also get triggered when we adopted the new fire maps in April?
No. Yeah.
No, yeah.
No, it did not. But Will, the other, the curious thing is, though, that when the local hazard mitigation plan gets adopted, it will trigger another look at the safety element. But I think that what we can do there, especially with regard to CAL FIRE, is demonstrate to CAL FIRE that, look, we did this process, the local hazard mitigation plan just lagged, and we've got a rapport with CAL FIRE so that as far as them giving their sign of approval again, understanding the circumstances for, you know, why this, another safety element update got triggered, we had that conversation actually already with the reviewer from CAL FIRE, so I think we're in good shape.
So this is a looking forward plan, correct? A planning document looking forward, just like our housing element is looking forward?
Correct. Like this, like your general plan is kind of laying out policy for the next 20 years or so. And so what, you know, what could happen, right, is that every year the city has to, is required to submit an annual, a general plan annual progress report. So you could, for example, any one of those policies that might be related to wildfire hazard, for example, when you report on the progress of your general plan implementation, you can identify that, yeah, we met this policy or we undertook this exercise to implement the safety element of the general plan.
So...
But the adoption, the approval tonight, if that occurs, would go into effect tonight. And so there are, it would become the law of the city once enacted.
Right. But what I'm saying is, is we looked ahead with increased density and changes to the city of how we're going to mitigate hazardous issues, fire naming, namely the first one, correct?
Whenever we, whenever we do an update to an element of the general plan, we want to make sure that that element is speaking to all the other elements, the circulation element, the housing element, et cetera.
But this is looking forward, too. It's a plan, Plan Four.
Correct.
Okay. So with that being said, with the possibility of increased density, did your maps reflect that?
The...
Because this is all, they're all tied together.
Right.
So did...
Well, the evacuation routes maps, for example, they captured a point in time.
Yeah. Point in time and not looking forward?
Councilman, if I could just get a little bit of clarity. So the housing element that was passed, including zoning changes and extra added homes that we had to add in accordance with the state requirements, have not changed. So this plan reflects those changes. Is it your question about what the state is allowed to do or what developers can do for additional homes?
Yes, because we already have, I would imagine that you already took in account for our housing element that's approved, which you already, it's a known factor, what we said that can possibly happen, we've already zoned for. But then now we have additional items that have come up from the state that might add to what we've already approved. So are we implementing or are we looking forward to that possibility within these maps that we've drawn or you've drawn?
Yeah.
Well, I think those major arteries are not going to change. Even if there is development that those evacuation routes remain the same, they're not going to change.
And that lies the problem, because if you have extra density or extra volume going through those arteries, that will change.
So if I could kind of speak, so the safety element identifies hazards in the community, right? You identify there are fire hazards in the community, there are potential flood hazards, we're not in a flood zone, but if a dam breaks. There are earthquake hazards in the community. And so, and of course, then the city establishes policies to, when you do develop and build constructions, things that you should be aware of if you're going to develop because these hazards exist, and it identifies some of the responses from agencies like LA County Fire or the Glendora Police Department to address. So whether you have, you know, the general plan is the general plan as it exists right now. So unless you're planning to increase the density, as the general plan exists right now, it accounts for the hazards in the community. It's not a prospective development vision. It just identifies the hazards in the city as they exist right now.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarity, because I didn't know, since it was a planning document, what are we planning for?
Yeah, and it's pretty clear in the document itself, you know, it actually lays out, these are the hazards in the community, these are their...
As it is today.
As it is, yeah. If we identify more earthquake faults in the community, or, you know, if there's flood areas that appear or other hazards, then they would then have to be, through future investigation, identified. But it does add things per new laws that were required, such as identifying the neighborhood, we talked a lot about the neighborhoods that are only one way in, one way out. Congratulations if you live in one of those, you live in one of the most dangerous neighborhoods in Glendora.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I can count myself there, too. But at the same time, it's not a, I think you were saying, is it a forward-looking document? I mean, is it a document that plans for the growth and development of the community? And really, that's not what the safety element is. It assesses the hazards in the community.
As it is. That's what I wanted clarity for.
Yeah.
So do we also look at, since you're here, do we also look at water supply and things of that nature for the development that we already have approved?
Again, it's, this is identifying, the safety element is identifying hazards in the community. It's not a, you know, document like the land use element, which identifies, you know, capacity for development in the community. This is, it's, you're identifying hazards and potential threats to the community itself as it exists, and as those hazards are understood and known.
Okay. On the, I don't know if Hans, if you can ask, answer this question. On the map itself, we already have a Glendora evacuation map on our website. It was updated a year ago last month, and it's just, it's just a map. There's no lines for evacuation. And now we have lines for evacuation, but we have no evacuation sites where to evacuate to. Is that something that we can add as far as sites? Do we already have any existing sites to evacuate to?
Yeah, I'll have Julie jump in real quick.
This is a common question, and we do not put out evacuation sites because it depends on where the emergency is. We have areas pre-designated throughout the city, so if the disaster's in the north because of the fire, we have pre-designated areas, but we don't put those out because we don't know what we're going to use until what the disaster is. So we have areas designated for that, but we don't, we don't list it because it varies. It varies depending on what the hazard is.
Julie, would you mind talking a little bit about, and from an annual basis, we are in a room together, we do an exercise to address just the situation, how we push out information to the community. Do you mind chatting just really briefly on that?
So twice a year, we conduct an EOC exercise, Emergency Operations Center exercise, and we go through scenarios like this. I think last April, we did a fire in the foothills. So we will go through, okay, logistics or operations is like, we're going to be evacuating these areas. Where are we going to set up shelters? So it's something we roundtable every six months during these exercises. And like I said, we have contracts with Red Cross. They've come out and they've looked at areas that we can use for shelters. And shelters are different than evacuation areas, right? We may just use a grass field somewhere as an evacuation area, somewhere where we're just going to stage people until we can set up that shelter and designate an official shelter. Also, something that has come up recently with the wildfires over here with Altadena and Pasadena, the county has done a really good job of managing regional shelters. So for us to run a shelter, it's a big deal. We have to bring Red Cross in, or we would have to use, I don't, Parks and Rec is not, Community Services, like employees to run, to staff those. And the county recognizes that with these little cities, it's hard for us. If we request Red Cross, but five other cities are impacted by the same fire, it's going to be hard to get Red Cross at every single one of those cities for a shelter. So with these most recent fires, they have looked at doing area shelters. So if, if, let's knock on wood, but if we had a fire come through like Colby again, where Colby was pretty isolated to Glendora, but, you know, if we had San Dimas, Glendora, Azusa, all the way over to Duarte, the county has been really good about setting up a shelter central to all those locations, so Red Cross can come in and do a really good job of running that shelter versus us opening these little shelters throughout. I'm just saying that's kind of the future of the disaster. We are working more regionally on it. However, we do have locations established in our city with Red Cross that can be used as shelters, either just for Glendora residents or even if we have something like this again where we need to invite other residents to come to our area, too.
So when you set up your EOC, you permanently already have your tools in place where you go, and you select them like a cafeteria of what you need and when you need it?
Yes. We have, and we have those, we have MOUs with, or agreements with Red Cross for those areas. It's a process. They have to come out and survey them to make sure that they meet their standards. They require, they require certain things. So we do have those established.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. So then, will this map get updated with the lines of evacuation when, and if this gets approved?
Yeah, we could certainly put that on the city webpage.
It's on there right now.
The plan itself will be on the city webpage for sure.
Because there's all, it's just a special webpage just for this map?
It should reflect the adopted one in the plan.
Okay, because it doesn't right now.
Yeah. So if the plan's adopted...
You want that, and you can...
It's not adopted yet, so, yeah.
Then you can update it as needed. Last question. Again, I went down this rabbit hole, and one of the essays that you had, they're SAFs, that about very high fire severity zones, I guess there was a law that was superseded or passed in SB 35 that basically said that if you have a safety hazard plan, that you can actually increase density within high fire severity zones? And is that what, I mean, again, I went down the rabbit hole, I didn't necessarily mean to, but I kind of went down there. That recent change to the SB 423, which went into effect January 1, 2025, removes the prohibition of expanding eligibility and including high fire severity zones. And the requirements for mitigation to mitigate that is for projects to qualify in the high fire severity zones. However, the local jurisdiction must have adopted a fire hazard mitigation measure specifically applicable to the sites. These measures ensure that the project adheres to strict fire safety standards. It's, you have to get to it from some of the specs that you laid out in here that brings you through this maze to get you to this document here.
Is your question, is the city going to try to bring additional housing into high fire hazard severity zones, or...
No, or does this trigger without us knowing that it will...
No. No. That's just a citation to what state law allows for, and that, yes, you can have a development in a high fire safety area, however, there has to be a safety plan in place and mitigation measures that are imposed on that development to make sure that it's safe for the residents in the general community. It's just simply citing what is...
I was concerned with unintended consequences.
Well, there are, well, it's state law that allows that, so...
So one of our, I'll jump in with something, and thank you for that, too, is that on page 47 of it, one of the fire hazard policies in here is SAF 22, which is maintain low danger... density, intensity, land use designations in the hillside and very high fire hazard severity zone areas of the city. And we actually put that in practice now. So for example, we don't allow accessory dwelling units in very high fire hazard severity zones, which is extra density, unless it's fully mitigated, which includes a street that meets city standards, 26 feet wide, all this sort of stuff. So we, this actual policy in here says we don't want more density in those areas, and we actually, through our zoning code, enact that and fire building code as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Michael. I have one question. Recognizing this is point in time as we have it today, and got that. Looking at it, and the fire department, LA County Fire Department reports their service response time is quite good, I think, four and a half minutes to respond, and we have numerous stations serving our station, serving the city. As we add development in our identified housing opportunities and/or population, will that need a review of the fire department's response time or equipment or staffing? And I don't know, I don't know the answer to this one. Funny, I'm not asking something, I have the answer this time. I don't know if their response time is factored on geography, population, dwellings, I'm not clear. But as we add potential people responding, requiring services, will their service, equipment and/or staffing grow with that?
So they, they review development now, the applications that come in, in terms of adequate apparatus for it.
Yeah, I don't know if any of us, I don't know if any of us can speak for the Los Angeles County Fire Department or any of the other agencies that might respond to a natural disaster. Is that what kind of you're saying?
Or just daily service requirement?
Yeah, I, I would- Yeah, I mean, I would say, I mean, just, I mean, just from a high level overview, we're 1,500, 2,000 residents less than we were five years ago. They're not reducing service to us, right? So when we start talking about the number of homes and less than three people per house, we're talking about a significant timeframe before there would be some impacts. All that said, as buildings or as a state allows different buildings to be different heights, there is real conversations with the fire department about having apparatus that are up at the higher levels or how we get there. So those on, those conversations will occur and do happen. The fire department's been really good about reaching out to staff and having those meetings, but it definitely is something that staff can follow up on and report back at a later time how exactly that goes about as an informational item. We're happy to do that.
And in any discretionary project that comes online, a required element that be studied under SEQA is, is fire response, police and fire response for those developments. And so that's, that's another check on, on the availability of service.
And one thing I'd like to jump in here, Perry just mentioned this, one of the policies, it's SAF 220, I assume on that, or there about page, but I'm on his computer, which is, says to coordinate adequate fire prevention services and facilities to meet the service standards identified by LA County Fire. So as those taller things come, or maybe apparatus are needed, we'll have to have those conversations with them. And they do review all new development that comes in, they get that, the building process.
Understood. Thank you. And recognizing their major call for service today is medical, not red stuff, so that's helpful, but we, we enjoy four stations, and if you count the fifth one in Azusa, the numbers from the stations, they're all over town because they're mutually responding as, as they're available. Okay, great. I have no other questions with that. Any other question, comment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Davis. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Thompson. Invite us to please vote when the ballot comes. Thank you, Perry, and thank you, Hans. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. All right, on to our next public hearing item. Hearing for tentative tract map and development plan review for a three-story, 24-unit residential development at 363 West Route 66. Project file number PLN 24-0051, applicant being the Olson Company and property owner Anthony Verlingo. And with that, I'll declare this public hearing open and invite Senior Planner Yalini Siva to report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The applicant is proposing a tentative tract map and a development plan review for a property located at 363 West Route 66, located east of Grand Avenue, west of Vermont. The project proposes a total of 24 units. Three of that 24 units would be available for purchase to moderate income qualified buyers. State law allows developers to ask for concessions, waivers, and/or incentives. Concessions and incentives are reductions in development standards where the actual cost reductions are used to make a project financially feasible for a developer. Waivers are modifications of development standards that would physically preclude the construction of an affordable housing project. For this project, the applicant is requesting an incentive wherein the domestic water service would be received via an existing six-inch water line within the northerly side of Route 66, as opposed to connecting to a water line under Route 66 to the southerly side. The applicant is also requesting waivers including reduced front and rear setbacks, private open space, garage dimensions, and storage area, and also a smaller street frontage dimension. The Housing Accountability Act limits cities' discretionary power to deny or reduce the density of housing development projects. Projects that comply with all applicable objective general plan, zoning, and subdivision standards, and design review standards are required to be approved by cities. This is an exhibit of the proposed site plan and the surrounding area. This is the site plan zoomed in a bit. The 24 units each provide two-car garages, and per Assembly Bill 2097, the location of the proposed site being within a half mile of the major transit stop prohibits a minimum requirement for parking spaces. Despite this, the project is providing a total of 49 parking spaces on-site. So that's the 48 spaces for the residential units in the garages, and then 1 ADA space provided for guest parking. There are common and private open spaces on-site and community areas and amenities proposed throughout, between the buildings. Drought-tolerant landscaping with canopy trees, ornamental shrubs, vines, and native grasses are already, are proposed throughout the site. These are the proposed rear and side elevations exhibiting a Spanish Revival-type architecture. This is the street view rendering from Route 66. Public notices were mailed, posted, and published per requirements. And the recommendation is that the council for the requested tentative tract map number 84726, and development plan review for a three-story multifamily residential project of 24 townhomes at 363 West Route 66 be approved. And the developer is available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Yalini. And I'd like to invite Olson Companies up. I'm not sure which one of you gentlemen are going to speak, probably both, but welcome.
Great, thank you. My- Good evening. My name is Brian Cunningham, and I serve as the Director of Development for the Olson Company. Joining me to help answer any questions is our Executive Vice President of Community Development, John Riegstein, and our design team. I want to start by thanking city staff for their dedication and hard work preparing this project for tonight's meeting. Their partnership has been instrumental in shaping this community. The community's design is consistent with the general plan and land use element for the Route 66 corridor-specific plan. It provides much-needed housing, including both affordable homes for income-qualified households and attainably-priced market-rate homes. The Olson Company is proud of our legacy of thoughtful design, homeowner satisfaction, and local collaboration. This commitment is reflected in our national recognition as the 2025 recipient of the Align Award for Overall Home Purchase and Ownership Experience, a distinction we've earned 10 times. Align is an independent homebuyer survey firm similar to JD Power. Olson has been ranked number one homebuilder in the nation for customer service, for over, for customer service and overall purchase and homeownership experience. Olson's long-term commitment is also reflected in our unique champion program, which is a dedicated Olson associate attends quarterly HOA meetings to support homeowners and help ensure that each community remains well-maintained. We've been working in designing and entitling this project for 18 months. In December of 2024, we vested our rights under California State Bill 330, and have since refined our entitlement applications five times to include feedback from staff. In September of 2025, the project was deemed complete, and we obtained Planning Commission approval on October 7. California has adopted several key housing laws that guide and support this project. California State's Density Bonus Law allows a modest increase in density when affordable housing is included. The Housing Crisis Act streamlines approvals, clarifies how units are calculated, and vests development rights. Lastly, the Housing Accountability Act requires cities to approve housing projects that meet local standards or face penalties. In July of 2024, we held an outreach meeting at Joyce Mobile Home Park, where about 10 to 15 residents attended. Our goal was to inform the community about the proposal, log any concerns, and answer any questions. The noted concerns were noise, dust, and debris from construction. We recognize this as important considerations and will fully comply with the city's approved construction hours and all local and state-required noise and dust control measures. The property has been vacant since 2005. Transforming this inactive site into a vibrant community will strengthen the area, support the state's housing goals, and provide lasting value for Glendora residents. Its longstanding underutilized condition has been recognized as an opportunity to positively repurpose this property. This thoughtful redevelopment not only enhances the corridor, but has also been widely supported by community members as a meaningful improvement. The project is composed of four buildings, each containing six homes. The project will have a single entry off Route 66 and has been designed with many community features, including enhanced pavers at the community's entrance, community monumentation in the project frontage, proposed artisan pedestrian gates, these will be presented to Planning Commission at a later date, tree-lined walkways, a gated amenity space including a shade structure, a barbecue, tables and chairs, additional bench seating, and a bicycle parking. We provided trees to screen the neighboring properties. We provided private yard areas, mailboxes, another gated turf area for our community activities, and a second proposed artisan pedestrian gate on the project frontage. The homes feature a classic Spanish colonial architectural style with light stucco exteriors complemented by two distinct accent color schemes that differentiate each building. This thoughtfully-designed community blends timeless architecture with modern, energy-efficient living. The design features details such as recessed windows with decorated trim, exposed truss tails, corbels, sculpted sills, balconies with French doors and metal Juliet railings, faux chimneys, arch-entry soffits, decorative lighting, address signage, and concrete S tile roofs. These complementary materials reinforce the architectural character while landscaping between the garages adds greenery and softens the streetscape. The design will complement the surrounding neighborhood while providing a lasting value to the city of Glendora. The community offers a unique opportunity to live in a well-connected, small-scale neighborhood with charm and distinction. With homes priced to serve a range of homeowners, from first-time buyers to moderate-income families, this enclave combines comfort and livability. In summary, this proposed community will benefit Glendora residents by transforming a long vacant property into a vibrant neighborhood. The project aligns with the city's general plan and zoning, advances the city's RENA housing goals, and provides both affordable and attainably market-rate homes. Its location will support the newly opened Gold Line Station, boost enrollment in the Glendora Unified School District, contribute developer impact fees, and strengthen local commerce through increased tax revenue and household spending. We are in complete agreement with the conditions of approval while meeting all requirements for the successful completion of this community. This includes Planning Commission's recommendation to preserve the existing on-site Veteran of Foreign Affairs plaque and ensure its return to its respectful organization. Thank you for your time, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brian. At this time, I will open for public testimony and welcome anybody who's chosen to speak.
Got it.
Looks like we have Mr. Harrison Smalley. Mr. Smalley, welcome.
It says three minutes here. It says three minutes.
That's a tough one.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I own the property next door, 347 Route 66. The property's been in our family for over 60 years, providing seven small businesses office space to earn a living for their families. We are very happy to have a development in our neighborhood, one that has been eyesore for too long. Public nuisance from the homeless, to lately even dumping, just a dumping ground in back. We even had to put locks on our hose bibs. We've had a lot of the homeless in our area. Still, I don't want to trade one management problem for another. My only concern involves parking. At the last planning meeting, I learned the state has more control in the city in terms of parking requirements within the metro overlay. The Olson team seems to be very responsive. When I discussed parking with Brian and Michael McBride at Olson, they assured me that they plan to have an HOA and adopt CCNRs after the project is approved by this council. They said part of the CCNRs will include a requirement to park in the garages and not to use them for storage. And they'll be providing two enclosed spaces per unit, even though they are part of the metro overlay. And I appreciated that. As a property manager for over 40 years, I know how people live and how parking can slowly become a problem. Things happen. Family member has to drive a company vehicle, car breaks down, get another vehicle, some moving boxes never make it out of the garage, a new driver gets a vehicle, you name it. So I suggested that they add a line or two to the CCNRs, reminding the property owners that they're not allowed to park on adjacent private properties. I have included a random satellite photo, which you could have seen up there, to our property on a weekday, and the businesses are using all available parking for their customers. Brian suggested, well, it's really up to you, really up to me and the city to enforce parking regulations, and I realize that. Still, I don't look forward to the calls from my tenants every time parking for them or their customers becomes an issue. And they'll call me. So again, my being familiar with CCNRs, which even tenants have to sign, I think it would help the HOA, the city, and myself to enforce the obvious consideration of their neighbor's private property rights. It would be something that the council will have some input on, I understand, when drafting of the CCNRs begins, once this project is approved. And I would appreciate you being sure that this suggestion and many, maybe other suggestions you may have are included in the CCNRs.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalley.
And I have a copy. And I have a copy.
Are there any other persons wishing to comment or have testimony? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back for comment of the board. Karen?
Thank you, sir. Yes, that building, you know, once served as a place that helped people go from one life to the next. So it is fabulous now to see that very property do the same thing, to go from one usage to a whole new experience and a new life. So look forward to that. Because as Mr. Smalley said, it has been a blighted area. And to be able to provide a new life to that lot and do it in a way that provides housing, that's wonderful. And the Olson Company has been a good partner for the city, and so we appreciate that. To Mr. Smalley's concern, I don't know if this is something that's already been looked into, and I don't want to promote any one business, but I know there is a towing company in town that, where I work at, we had similar issues of neighbors wanting to use our parking lot for their vehicles. So we have an agreement with that tow company, and they, at their cost, put signage that informed the neighbors if they illegally parked there that that towing company could come and take their vehicle. So I don't know if that's one option or also, you know, other ways to mitigate that. As Mr. Smalley said, with the HOA of reminding people to be good neighbors and not park on that property or any other adjacent properties. But look forward to seeing this take place. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. And before I go any further, I will offer to Olson Companies, did you want to have any response to the public comment? Or I'm sure you may have response to discussions of the panel. So I'll take the liberty of offering you this or the other, or both.
Yeah, no, we're very happy to disclose that and include that in the CCNRs and disclose that to our buyers that no offsite parking on private property would be allowed. It's no problem.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. my esteemed friends up here know the question I want to ask, but I've, but I've already got the answer. So I will spare the four of you from asking the question. How many bedrooms are on the first floor? Fifteen of 39, so good job, guys. And I appreciate that. That's a question that I always ask. And so that's good.
He just likes to sleep with his car. That's what the deal is.
And not to, it's, there's 24 units and there'll be 12.
12, 12 of 24, okay. I was reading the wrong, the wrong line. Well, that's half. So, so, you know, you're 50%. You're, you know, in the, you know, Hall of Fame, so. Speaking of, you know, Hall of Fame, the Dodgers lost, so they're not in the Hall of Fame yet. But anyway, I'm, I'm happy that you've agreed to what was just said. Parking is a big thing, and I know that there are rights that you have. But once this build and you guys are gone, we, we, we have to live with everything. And so thank you for accommodating that. I do appreciate the fact that there are two spots for, for, you know, everybody to, you know, park both of their cars if they have two cars. I just hope that they don't fill those spots with junk and then expect to park on the street or at, you know, down the street or, you know, just, you know, whatever, you know, whatever they want to do. I'm going to support this. Good job. And as Karen and others have said, this is going to be a nice treat for us because I've lived here for 35 years and that place has been bad, bad news for a long, long time. So, welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mendel. Shawna?
Thank you. I watched the planning commission meeting, and I know you guys have already been beat up enough about the number of waivers on the project. So I'm not going to say anything about that. You're well within your right, and I, I understand that. I would just say that the Olson Company has a very good reputation. In Glendora, you do beautiful work. I mean, your project on San Jose is gorgeous. The, you know, what you guys did at Gladstone and I think Bonnie Cove, I think really added to the community. So I would just say, you know, looking forward. And this is actually, it's a very nice project. I think it's nicely done. You guys do good work. I would just ask that you keep in mind that quality really matters in a community like ours, and we want to see your very best work. So, you know, and you do nice stuff. So. Anyways, I'll just leave it at that. I would like to address a comment that was made during the, the meeting with planning commission. One of the commissioners made an assertion about homelessness in the area increasing in regards to like bike theft or something. And that is totally inaccurate, so I just want to set the record straight. Homelessness and crime are not increasing in this area. In fact, they are decreasing considerably. I pulled some information. We just had an update on this last month. And according to our numbers from the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority in 2024, their count showed 112 individuals. And this year, that was down to 49. That is not an accident. That is due to a lot of hard work from the Glendora Police Department, from our Human Services Department, our Community Impact Team with the Police Department. A lot went into that, and I think that is important to point out. So I appreciate all of the effort from all of those people and wanted to get on the record that that was categorically false. Let me see, a couple of questions. The art requirement for the gates, I hope these are really special gates. Are they going to be really special?
Yeah, there, we have a public artist. These will be one of a kind. They will complement the local area, but they will be brought to planning commission for, for approval. So yeah, we are just submitting that application in the upcoming weeks. So they are one of a kind piece that will complement and pay an homage to the big tree park, which is just down the street.
Oh, that's nice. Okay. Regarding, you've mentioned multiple times that the Olson Company stays involved with your projects for 10 years. What authority do you have in that relationship? Like, let's say, you know, there is an issue. Like, do you retain some kind of decision-making authority with the HOA? Or can you explain your relationship?
We don't. We're not voting members, but the role is to be advisory. We do an inspection whenever we go out there a quarter prior to the meeting, really to look at maintenance, whether the association's spending the money the way they're supposed to. And if there are problems, we notice them. We let the board know. You know, maybe some corrections that could be made. It could be anything from irrigation to, you know, making sure they're spending their money, to repaint the community, the roof, whatever. And it's a minimum of 10 years that we stay involved. It's a very important program. We can also be an ombudsman. If there's a problem that they're having, we can take that and come and talk to city staff about it rather than having it ever reach you guys. So we try to nip things in the bud early and, and be an advisor to the association as well as, you know, help them spend their money correctly. And that's really led to the long-term success and quality of the Olson communities. They look good over time. And I like to think a big part of that is our involvement that we stick with, and we don't, we don't disappear.
Do we know a cost approximately of the units? With the exception of the, the affordable ones, the, the market rate ones, do you have a range?
Roughly the mid-sixes to the low-sevens. And that, the reason for that is there's been a little bit of, a little bit of slowing in certain areas in the townhome market over the past few months or so. We were maybe a little more bullish on prices six months, eight months ago. Nothing precipitous, just, you know, a little bit of leveling off, which is probably a good thing. But probably the mid-sixes into the low-sevens based on this, today, based on the market today.
Okay, that's good. I like to hear that. I think that was it. Yep, that was it. Thank you. Appreciate it. And looking forward to having that lot. Beautiful. It's an eyesore. And so we appreciate your, your involvement in helping refresh that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. Michael?
Thank you, David. I'd like to echo my colleagues. I'm looking forward to this eyesore to be gone and cleaned up and repurposed and rebirthed, as it were. With that being said, on the affordable units, who manages that covenant?
Well, we work very closely with city staff. And the covenant is recorded against the property and against the units that are going to be sold to those moderate-income buyers. We work very closely with staff as we go through a process, usually a lottery process, to reach out to those potential buyers and make sure all the paperwork that is signed in the purchase of the property is done so in accordance with the agreement we have with the city. And of course, it's all based on state law. And so that process is managed jointly with Olson salespeople, city review, as we effectuate each sale.
Right, but as time goes on and those, those homes get flipped, if, well, if you were, there's a covenant on there for the 55 years, I believe. So who oversight sees that?
Yeah, so what would happen is when that property goes for sale, there are documents recorded against the property. So that's something that title will point out, be discovered through escrow. Those documents will be researched and those restrictions will be brought to the fore at that time.
Yeah, and the, and the city will go through a process of income verification at that time that it's flipped as well. So we'll have oversight on that forever?
Yeah. Well, not forever.
55 years? It's forever. We'll be gone. In your CCNRs, are you going to notify prospective buyers of our no overnight parking on the streets?
Oh, absolutely. We'll notify them of that, not parking on the neighbor's property. And most importantly, we, the HOA strictly enforces garage parking. They have the authority to periodically inspect the garages to make sure that the property owners are parking their vehicles in the garage and not loading it up with storage. That's been very effective over time. So yeah, parking is a very big deal, and those, that'll all be disclosed to the buyers.
I was happy to see on the staff report, it said that you were entitled to unlimited waivers, and you only took a handful. So, so thank you.
Well, the quality of the property is, is important. State law, this is something we talk about a lot, and we hold an annual symposium with Claremont University to, and we invite council members and city staff to attend to talk about these issues. I'm a former city employee. I worked for 18 years. I was in Jeff Kugel's role in that capacity. I understand that there's a trade-off. There's a concern about quality. And the Olson Company certainly does not, would never want to take advantage of state law. We want quality in our development, but we're also competing to buy property with a lot of other folks. But when we're able to secure that property, we're going to put the very best quality into it that we can and also be able to provide at least 10% of the units at affordable levels. But others don't do as good a job at that. And so this is an ongoing debate. But Olson always, we always put our best foot forward even before all these new laws came into play because our reputation is very, very important to us long-term. Things change, laws change, but our relationship with the community is remembered for a long period of time. So it's very important to us.
So thank you for that wonderful segue. I'm not happy with your front setback that you want to violate. I don't care for the mechanical equipment in the front. It's ugly. It shouldn't be there. You have 30 feet in the back courtyard area that you can put that because you have to bring power back there anyway. And your balcony that you have, the pop-out, oh, not balcony, the pop-out for the, I don't know, the, the window that you have there off to the both sides, it looks out of place. Looks like it should probably be stuck with the rest of the, of the building. It's really a side elevation and not a front elevation. Is there any way you can make that look like a front elevation?
We've worked very closely with staff, and we have a, an outstanding team that we're working with on this issue. I completely respect your thoughts, absolutely. But, you know, this design has been formulated with a lot of back and forth, but I do appreciate your, your.
Is there any way you can put at least the mechanical equipment in the courtyard area?
I know, I know we've looked at options and.
30 feet.
We, we've looked at options and we weren't able to make that work. Brian, you, you discussed various locations for the mechanical equipment. Right, so it wasn't done haphazardly at all. It took into account other potential locations. And there's a lot of other factors that go into the location besides, hey, where, where do we want to put it? Right? I, I don't know the answer as to why, you know, that, that was critical, that that location be the one that we selected. But that's why it's there.
And on the, on the, the window framing that you have there, it's out of place with the rest of your design. It was a nice and clean design. I like everything except for your front elevation. It just does not look right. Is there any way of modifying that?
At this point, we really, we really can't get, get that done, but I do respect your thoughts on that and apologize that, that it doesn't look better for, for you. I very much.
Yeah, it's the bay, it's the bay window. Let's see. So on, on this, so Olson is the first company, I think, we have that's, that has not, the other companies have taken waivers and concessions? Okay. All right, those are the only questions that I have and concerns. But if there's any way you can not use the front setback because we worked really hard to, to push it back to the 15 feet and not encroach in there. And again, electrical equipment, it doesn't look right.
Happy to have a further discussion internally, but I know that we did look closely at it. But I will, happy to give, give that some thought. I just can't promise anything, but I appreciate you.
Move the front doors or put electrical equipment on the other side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I welcome the change out from the dead mortuary. It'll be a great improvement, but I have some long-range lifetime concerns of what's going to happen to us, and parking is huge. The police chief will tell you, I pester the crap out of them every week, every day because we have quality of life issues that we're trying to work on, and we're just creating a lifetime of issues with no parking. And I have a Thanksgiving game, Thanksgiving Day game. If half the residents decide to host a Thanksgiving celebration, where are their guests going to hang their cars? Gentlemen at head property next door addressing that very issue. The medical office right now, next door on the west, uses that for parking for employees. I don't know where they're going to hang those. You've got, without space between cars, four spaces on the curb when you're done. By the time you add your driveway, if the average length of car sold today is 14 and a half feet, I checked it, Google says it is, so I'll trust that. It must be. That's an issue. And as cars grow and real, life becomes real and they add cars and things, we're going to end up, this is the first example of, of exceptions and waivers that state forces on us. We're going to end up looking like Glendora Avenue, South River Highway, folks. I don't want to look like that. And that'll be long after the project's completed. This, we're just setting ourselves up to be discouraged and declining like surrounding neighborhoods and not what Glendora is trying to reestablish an image of. We talked, and for disclosure, we met in June and we talked about this. I raised the question then. I'll raise it again. I raised the question then, I'll raise it again now, and it was in our objective design standards about the roof edge treatment. Is there any way we can add an eve instead of just a rolled tile at the ceiling, at the roof and the wall? Even a short eve gives it a much more completed, richer, less, not a non-economy type appearance that would do the company justice. I'm kind of disappointed in those couple of factors. You've done a great job on our other projects in town. This one disappoints me. Kind of missed a couple of points, and I'm not sure which way to vote on it because of that. I just, I want to support it, but there's a couple of issues that we get to look at for the rest of our lives, and I think Olson's got more in you than just that. Any consideration to that?
Happy to give it further consideration.
We said that in June, and here I am in October, and I've got the same one.
Understood. We did take a look at it. I can't promise that we can do it. You know, we've got our financing in place. We're going to close escrow in just a few weeks. Not a lot of changes we can make at this point, but I'm happy to bring it back to the group to see if it can be done in an economical fashion, so that it doesn't upset that balance, so we can, in fact, close escrow and move forward with construction. So I will gladly take that discussion back for consideration and see if we can accommodate that.
Looking at the design rendering from the common driveway, it looks pretty plain. The eve roofline would, I think, offer a lot of value to the appearance of the property. I appreciate the CCNRs on the parking concerns and the storage, and, you know, most people around here, you know better than I, that becomes a basement. We just can't do that. If we're adding 12 cars every day, where are they going to go? Hanging out on the street overnight? The chief will really hate me. He probably hates me now, but he's going to really hate me. I don't want to avoid going there if we can. On the, we talked about the covenant and things. We don't have any way of recovering fees when we do a transaction or inspection. Guess I'm looking at city. We just have to hope it comes to our attention and we monitor that, right?
We do have some user fees, but as these affordable units, as we've discussed with the council, this becomes an obligation the city has over time, so it is one of those additional expenses.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Wes?
I do not, but I do appreciate your ongoing support over many years. We are very honored to be constructing the community at the Woodland and San Jose site, very much looking forward to that, and have very much wanted to work even more in Glendora over the years. We've had a few opportunities. Look forward to this one. We will do our very best at this location. It's different. It's a much different site, different circumstances. We had to be competitive to be able to acquire that site and develop it. One thing I will mention, there is an area, I don't know if we can pull it up, we only have one disabled parking space here, and we were faced with a choice in the area that's left, which is this area right here. If we were to stripe those spaces as guest parking, I believe the requirement would have been, one would have had to be an EV only for a regular car, and the other would have had to be another disabled parking space. So instead of doing that, we left that open and unstriped, but what I will let you know is, it's going to, that's the way it's going to be left, and guests will park there. It's just not going to be marked for guest parking. So that will, in fact, in actual usage, those will be two guest parking spaces in addition to the disabled space. So I know that's not maybe as many parking.
Thanks for that clarification, because I was fuzzy on that, and I appreciate.
That helps a little bit, that along with the enforcement of the garage parking.
It does. Okay. Okay, I have no more, and I think Michael has another question, please.
Just a real quick for staff, is this considered by right with what they've done? And do we have much of a choice to approve or not to approve?
Oh, Jeff, where is Jeff? Not by right, obviously. The city's standards are as such that there are some requirements the city council has to adopt in terms of the development process, and Jeff would be happy to remind the council of the direction they gave staff during the housing element, the changes that were made, and sort of why this comes back for our approval.
So you're talking about this project, is it by right? So in, I mean, in essence, this, the project requires a development plan review, which is a discretionary permit, but I think there's an argument that.
But as it's laid out now?
As it's laid out now, I mean, yeah, with the waivers and concessions, you know, we can't deny it without facing some, putting the simplicity and some risk of litigation and other nasty things. That's sort of the way, that's the world we live in now.
Okay, just wanted that clarity on record.
Yeah.
So remember, this is our city. We want the best product. I know you want the best product for your company, so keep in mind what we're all saying up here when you end up the final build. If you can make some of those concessions, we greatly appreciate it, because again, it's your name.
And we will, we will take that into account. We will.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A motion by Karen. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, on to other things. Back to regular type business, consent calendar, items eight through 12 may be enacted by one motion without individual discussion unless somebody wants to have a request to remove or separate the item.
I move to approve.
I know there's some comments that want to come, but does anyone want to pull anything? Seeing none? I know that Mr. Thompson has a question or comment, and I think Mr. Alaros has a question or comment, so please.
I will offer to support your motion. So that's a second, but I would just simply like to say that it's about time that Gladstone Park is getting what they're going to get. John O'Gary, your dream has come true, and I know that you pushed hard, and tables down there, barbecue down there, a prep table, nice shade, that area gets hot, and I just wanted to say it's the best $186,000 that we probably have spent in a long, long time. So, great job, great way to end. I mean, you're not ending yet. You've still got a few more days, but good job, and I hope that they invite you to the first hot dog fry that they have, because, you know, you've earned it, so thank you. Michael?
Think of that as a retirement present. Adam, just wanted to clarify, item 12, it's $85,000, not $170,000, because there's two items on there. One just moves monies around and one authorizes it.
That's correct. The 10 workstations, those come out to $85,000. In order to pay for those, the city needs to move money from fund, from a fund balance in Fund 301 and Fund 502. So the amount of $85,000 shows up as a supplemental appropriation, so if it's like a savings account, that money moves into the checking accounts and then it's spent from there. So yes, it is $85,000. Total impact requires a couple of different actions in order to spend the fund.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's more discussion, I'll ask us to please vote. Items eight through 12 on the consent calendar pass five zero. Brings us to item 13, award a five-year professional service agreement to Axon Enterprises, Inc., to consolidate current body worn camera, fleet camera, and interview camera agreements, and include the upgrade of several current projects, the purchase of new TASER devices, and replacement of body worn cameras and fleet cameras for an amount not to exceed And reporting is Cadre of Police Department's best, so it looks like Julie's beginning. Go ahead, Julie.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight with Captain Stabio and Lieutenant Fenner, and we will be discussing the proposed Axon purchase and service agreement. So a little background, we started using Axon back in 2021. At that time, council approved $208,000 to purchase 62 TASER devices and the equipment associated with them. Then in 2022, council approved another contract. It's just over $700,000 for a five-year service contract with Axon. This transitioned us from, we used to have tape recorders, basically tape recorders, for lack of a better description, and separate in-car video, and this brought us up to date, basically, with body worn cameras where our audio and our video was integrated in one, and it also integrated with our in-car video system. And at that time, we also updated our interview cameras, which was all integrated in one system, and this allowed us also a digital evidence storage platform. So we had one platform to store all the in-car videos, all the body cam videos, and all our interview videos, all in one platform. So we did that in 2022, and that was approved in 2022. So since 2022, we have purchased a lot from Axon, including our license plate reader systems. We've purchased additional body worn cameras, because we've had additional officers, and we've purchased additional fleet cameras since that time. As a result of this, we currently have 13 separate contracts with Axon, which is kind of a nightmare, for all these separate contracts that have happened since that initial 2021 contract. So what we're looking to do with this is we would like to consolidate our 13 current contracts into one contract that will cover all the current equipment we have, in addition to giving us technology upgrades, equipment replacements, and new TASER devices. And I'm going to let Lieutenant Fenner talk about the technology upgrades that come with the contract.
Good evening. So when we went into this agreement, we got the quote from Axon, they put together, and it was going to be pretty similar to what we're paying already, once we add on things we need for the future. So they have what's called a law enforcement safety plan, and this bundle, so with the bundling, we're able to save money, and we're able to buy, renew our contract if approved, and add different technologies that we could use later. So for example, taking the 13 separate contracts that Julie was talking about, that will combine body cameras, fleet cameras, interview room, evidence storage, it'll make us, that'll put in one system. So it'll take it into a system called Axon Fuses, and with Respond Plus, it'll put everything into one pane of glass. So instead of logging onto all these different systems and paying different invoices, it puts everything into one map or dispatch for our real-time crime center, where our detectives can look at it, they can get the LPR hits on that map, they'll be able to get the drone feeds, community cameras, a supervisor can look at the dash camera live for safety. So if an officer is not responding to their radio, a supervisor can select the car and look through their dash camera to see if that officer is in a fight, and that's really important to us for safety. They can also, in emergencies, look out of the officer's body camera, live view that. That's the future that we will get with this package. In addition to that, we will get virtual reality training, and this will allow officers to practice communication, de-escalation, and crisis response in a safe, realistic environment, and that way they can build empathy and judgment, and it's reusable training, so they can do it in briefing in the parking lot, they can put it on, it looks kind of goofy. I was going to bring one, but it can be dangerous, so we, they can put it on, and they can run through these scenarios. They have simulated weapons, so it would be their actual handgun or a TASER, and they can choose lethal, non-lethal, in the safe environments. So with the package comes other software bundles that are included, which is auto-transcribing interviews, body camera audits, so it can have supervisors audit predetermined criteria for incidents and look at that body camera video for accountability. Automated redaction, it'll be faster for court, so our court officer has to redact, and so does our records person for public records requests, and this automated software will speed things up and decrease man-hours. It'll also speed up the way the detectives can handle cases, because there's community portal, where we can open up a link that the community can send videos to our detectives for faster investigations. And one of the greatest, one of the best parts of this contract that I like is the replacement, it's called a refresh. So in 2028, they're going to, we'll get all of our body cameras refreshed, because they're pretty much like cell phones. They have batteries, they're LTE, they break. So instead of buying them over and over again, we get these refreshes. So they replace all the body cameras in 2028. We had this done already once, about two years ago, and we got a new model too, so if there's an upgrade available, if they have better technology, we get that included for free. There's a second upgrade of the body cameras, they'll do a full replacement in 2030, and in addition to that, they'll replace the entire fleet's cameras, upgrading to the newest technology in 2030 for body cameras and fleet. And I think that we're to Captain Stabio. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not going to give you an exhaustive history of the TASER, but I will tell you a couple of things to help you understand how important this is for us. The TASER has been around for a little bit more than 50 years, although not in its current configuration. It is perhaps one of the most advanced pieces of equipment that has come to pass and is widely used in law enforcement, really throughout the country and in other countries as well. It gives you something that is very, very necessary. It gives you time and it gives you distance. Being that it is a piece of equipment, it has its limitations. The recent redesign of TASER and the TASER 10 that we are recommending for incorporation into this contract gives you a couple of different things. It increases the distance between the officer and the individual who's either become violent or has signaled verbally or physically the intent to become violent. It gives you that distance, and it moves that distance from 21 feet, which is the existing maximum range of the TASER 7, to 45 feet. That distance gives you time. It gives you time to de-escalate, it gives you time for threat assessment, it gives you time to look for other options, and that is what keeps our people safer and gives us better outcomes. Statistically speaking, we have 40,000 to 50,000 police contacts per year, if not more. Less than, way less than one-half of 1% goes to a use of force, but when that happens, it can be violent and we can get people hurt. Moving to better TASER technology that gives us more distance and more options, keeps our people safer, and it reduces injuries to suspects, officers, and the community at large. We have in-house trainers for these TASERS, and they really are a better upgrade to what we currently have. And I will send it back to Julie Linger to talk a little further about this.
Thanks, Captain.
So I'm just going to wrap it up. The key benefits of this contract is improved transparency and accountability with the new technology, enhanced officer safety and readiness with the virtual reality training and with the new TASERS. It also increases efficiency by consolidating our 13 contracts into one and all our systems into one platform that can be viewed without several different logins. And then by bundling it, it's a cost savings of almost $900,000. I have the chart here that shows the difference if we were to purchase all these items separately, it comes to almost $2,300,000. But by bundling them like we are, it discounts it almost to $900,000. So our fiscal impact, the funding, we would need $300,000 from asset forfeiture fund, $390,000 from our COPS fund, and $775,000 from the technology fund. We are looking to get supplemental appropriations for fiscal year '25 through '27, $100,000 for asset. For $100,000 for asset forfeiture and $77,000 for our COPS money, which is the community-oriented policing services. And then the technology fund will increase, will request an increase in the technology fund for year two and four of the contract to cover as asset forfeiture becomes less available. And then by consolidating, the major fiscal impact is by consolidating all the current contracts and bundling the equipments. We get all the upgrades and we save almost $900,000 over the five-year contract. So the recommendation is that to award a master service and purchase agreement with Axon Enterprises in an amount not to exceed $1,397,498.67 over a five-year period, to authorize the police chief to execute any necessary contingencies in the amount not to exceed 5% of the original contract. That's already in that total. And to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and to approve the supplemental appropriations of the $100,000 for asset forfeiture and $77,000 in the COPS fund for the fiscal year '25 through '27. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Julie. Lieutenant and Captain, very much. I'll bring it back to the panel for comments. Shawna?
Thank you, Julie. Lots of great information. I was really excited to see that we'll have VR training opportunities. That seems really cool. I like that. Although I'm disappointed that we didn't get like a demo on this new TASER 10.
Oh, he wanted to. Yeah, he was shut down.
I saw the chief point at me earlier.
Somebody should have raised their hand. We volunteer you out. I think this is great. Anything to keep our officers safe and, you know, in turn, keep our community safe is, I think, fantastic, so good job.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. This is really cool tech. I really like this. Is there an app version for the dashboard?
He's our tech pro.
This looks like a lot of fun.
Which dashboard are you referring to?
The one that you had on the screen that showed all the different pics?
Yes, there's an app for that. So an officer will actually be able to look at that app. And if we have a drone or a camera, they can click on that and see like what's behind a shed before they walk around.
Very nice.
Great.
Very nice. Does this affect any of the data storage?
No, the data storage is unlimited. It's included in the contract for anything recorded on any device.
Okay. And the cameras, are they a little smaller? Because the ones we have now are kind of bulky.
We're hoping that with that refresh, it gets me.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Michael. Mendel?
This is a business question. I mean, you know, I want to support this. And we're in like to our eyeballs with this company. But did we ever look at some of the others that they compete with? Like MSA Safety and Central Square? Have we looked at what they can offer us?
So we deep dove into this. I joined LA County Tech Group. It's ran by LAPD Captain. We meet once a month and talk about technologies. I've demoed Flock OS, which is a competitor. We actually use Flock cameras in the city. And talking to everybody in the area, collaborating and looking at where the future is going. It's important for us to be on what other people are on because those systems have to connect and speak to each other. So that was a big factor. We're going to be able to, in emergency, connect to, let's just say, Covina or Azusa or anywhere else around here that has that technology, Sheriff's Department. So we considered all those things, and that's why we chose to stay with Axon. Luckily for us, they acquired technology that we're looking for. And that was FUSES. That was a company they acquired that allows everything to connect together.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
I mean, they just acquired, they just made a big investment. And their stock is dropping. Now, it's still a good buy. So they're not going to go broke, but they made a big investment on Prepared. It's a, you know, AI group. And, you know, this is just purely a business thing. I mean, I'm all for buying all these things because I want everybody to be safe and I want us to have the best. But I'm just looking at a business choice here. And I want to make sure that these guys are going to be around in five years.
I will point to a couple of the other agencies in the San Gabriel Valley. And I'm not trying to call out any other companies here, but you look at other body worn camera companies like LensLock. You know, some of our neighbor agencies went with those initially because they are more cost-effective. But the truth is, and it really is true, you get what you pay for.
That's true.
We went with Axon because it allows us to incorporate all the things that Lieutenant Fenner spoke about. It allows us to send and receive information from the Los Angeles County DA's office, from the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training. It allows us to get evidence from our community members, and it's seamless. There are no problems with connectivity. There are no problems where a link gets sent and the link is dead. It's expensive, and it's expensive because it works, and it works well. And it is the industry standard for what we are talking about here today.
Good. Okay.
One more thing if I could add. It's agencies around us are having to remove their systems and replace them. And a lot of them are choosing Axon. And it's a lot cheaper to, more affordable to go with the right thing the first time than pay a little more.
Well, yeah. And I'm in your camp here because I've been on the cutting edge. And the cutting edge is not always a good place to land. So, but I was just asking a question. And, you know, I want to support this. I think it's great. I like the, you know, amount of money that you guys saved, so all that's good. But I just, you know, there's competition that's, you know, out there. So I just didn't know if we had looked around. But anyway, this is good. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. Karen?
Here's a business tip. If the stock's low now, buy low, sell high. With that in mind.
So, I mean, I don't own it, but.
Hey, well, there's your business tip. Now, I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay.
You didn't get enough to say anything.
I know. Thank you for the savings. Great job. I'm all good. Motion carries unanimous, 5-0. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion for us to extend beyond the bewitching hour? Also move?
So move to go beyond our curfew.
A second.
All right.
But that's not a encouragement to drag it out too long. So let's move it along, folks.
All right. Moving on to our next item. Introduction and First Reading of an Ordinance Approving the 2025 Citywide Engineering and Traffic Speed Surveys and Declaring Speed Limits. Valerie, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Council. So as mentioned, this item is going to cover the 2025 update to the City Engineering Traffic and, or Engineering and Traffic Survey, which establishes the legal basis for posted speed limits throughout the city. Joining me this evening is John Dorado. He is the Senior Project Manager with Advantech Consulting Engineers. And that is the firm that helped prepare this survey on the city's behalf. So as a quick overview, the Engineering and Traffic Survey is the technical study that determines whether our posted speed limits are both enforceable and safe under the California Vehicle Code. The study looks at roadway conditions, traffic patterns, and prevailing speeds to make sure speed limits reflect how, or posted speed limits reflect how drivers are actually using the road while supporting safety. State law does require that the survey is updated regularly in compliance with most current version of the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices and Assembly Bill 43 to maintain radar enforcement eligibility. Advantech Consulting also prepared the last citywide survey, which was completed in 2017. So in November 2024, under our on-call agreement, city issued a task order to Advantech to repair the updated survey. So tonight, this presentation will walk through how the 2025 survey was developed, the regulatory framework behind it, and the recommended updates to our posted speed limits. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John to cover the technical components of the study.
Hi, John. Welcome.
All right. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, and City Council. Thank you, Valerie. Yeah, so as Valerie stated, we prepared the 2017, and we're right in the middle of the criteria to update for this next round. So we prepared the Engineering and Traffic Survey based on the latest California Vehicle Code and California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Engineering and Traffic Surveys are valid for five years. You can extend up to seven, and then again, up to 14. But that is only if there are no significant changes in the roadway or traffic conditions. This is one of the requirements that was updated based on Assembly Bill 43, known as AB 43, that was passed in 2021. And this allows greater flexibility in establishing speed limits. And some examples are listed here, which includes rounding to the nearest five-mile increment. Say, when justified, we have some engineering judgment that we could use. You can also round down again another five miles per hour if the roadway or corridor meets criteria for safety corridors, business activity districts, or as a land or facility that generates high concentration of bicyclists or pedestrians. It also provides the ability to either maintain the currently adopted speed survey or the one previous. Some of the data that's used is the 85th percentile speed. That's typically, we use that as our baseline. So for example, if the 85th is 42, we round either up and down to the nearest five-mile increment. That would be, say, 40. And then we use the AB 43 criteria to either round down further or maintain the current speed. One of the next ones, I'll skip the 10-mile, but for the collision rates is another primary factor that we use. So we compare that with some of the county averages. And if it's over, that gives us another, say, tool, so to speak, to recommend a lower speed limit. So we evaluated 119 street segments within the city. This includes arterial streets, collector, and local streets that are not residential. Some of the elements of the speed survey include, as I mentioned before, we collect the surveys based on certified radar operator. They're in an unmarked vehicle. We collect the surveys on a typical weekday, which is between a Tuesday through Thursday during non-peak hours. Make sure the weather is basically nice out. So we want to get, you know, the regular travel conditions that are out there. And some of the sources that we use to conduct our collision rates calculations are from the SWITTERs, which is statewide integrated traffic record systems. Some of the engineering judgment, if we're going to recommend a lower speed limit, excuse me, it includes identifying conditions that are not readily apparent to motorists. Say, example, if it's an elementary school off the main corridor. And then we also do a field verification ourselves of all the corridors of existing conditions and applying the AB 43 requirements. So as a result, we are recommending to reduce speeds along 17 segments within the city. It'd be a reduction of five miles per hour. And if the city approves this, then the next step is to replace those signs with the updated signs so it can be enforced by police department. So here's a summary of our results as well. We analyzed 119 roadway segments. 102 were not changed. 17 were reduced five miles per hour. And we had no increases in speed limits throughout the city, which I think is a good thing. And then we also provided a map that really illustrates all of our recommendations. With that said, I'm passing it back to Valerie.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. So just to recap, as he mentioned, this is going, the results of the speed survey should call for 17 segments to have a reduction in the speed limit. The city's posted speed limits are included in the Glendora Municipal Section 10.05.010. And because those updated, because the updated survey recommends those changes in the segments, then the ordinance before you tonight would repeal the current list of speed limits and replace it with the updated speed limits, including all of those segments that would be changed and lowered. So upon Council's acceptance of this, a second reading for the ordinance will be scheduled for November 12. And upon adoption, as mentioned, staff will proceed with having those posted speed limits swapped and changed to update the new ones. And the ordinance would go into effect 30 days after Council's adoption. So with that, the recommendation this evening is for the City Council to waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce for first reading an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Glendora, California Approving the 2025 Citywide Engineering and Traffic Survey and Amending the Glendora Municipal Code to Determine and Declare Prima Facie Speed Limits and to Instruct Staff to Prepare a Summary Ordinance for Publication." So that will conclude staff's presentation. We're happy to answer any questions. In addition to John and myself, we also have Steve Itagaki with JMD. Thank you for staying this evening. He is with JMD and also serves as a traffic engineer to assist the city. So with that, open it up to any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Valerie. And John and Steve, thanks for hanging out. I'll bring it back for discussion. Shawna?
Thank you, Valerie. No questions from me. With the increase in the number of kids on bikes, I'm not a big fan of the e-bikes, but there are an awful lot of kids out there on the bike. So I think probably reduced speeds are not a bad thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mendel?
When does this become effective? Because I need to make sure that my wife knows. She drives a lot of these streets, and I just want to make sure I give her kind of a heads up. So.
So this will come back to Council. It'll be on consent for a second reading on November 12. And it'll be 30 days after that, so by the end of the year.
So it'll be a Christmas gift for some people, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
I hear it comes with tasers.
Yeah, well, that's true. Okay, thank you. Good job.
Okay. Karen?
Yeah, along what Mendel was saying, yes, I noticed several streets in my neighborhood. So I'll start practicing the slower speeds now. But thank you. Ready to go ahead with this.
Michael?
I didn't see any exceptions for any small white sports cars. No?
That one, we're reducing 10 speed, 10 miles per hour.
Oh, okay. On Serra Madre, that new stretch over there, it's pretty fast. And I think you're leaving it at 45 miles an hour. Have you really looked at that? I mean, that is turned into a racetrack.
I know we did, yes. I know we looked at it.
Can you go back to the map that you have up there, please?
It's colored red right now.
Yes, it is. Yeah, it's 45 in the red. At your house, it's what, 40?
It says that, but that's not what it happens.
I know that. Is there a requirement to have the speed limit close to what's in practice?
As in practice? Well, we use the code that we have.
That's at 80%.
And yes, what do you mean in practice? Could you?
Well, people drive fast on 45 there.
Yes, well, we use the 85th percentile as our basis, really. So let's say, I can look this up here. Let's say if the regular speed was, say, 55, right? That would be our baseline. Then if we were to, say, knock it down, if we have a reason, an engineering judgment reasons to do 50, that'd be one reason. Another reason to do that, or the next reason would say, oh, this is either determined to be a safety corridor or a highly-used pedestrian or bicycle activity, which the criteria is very loose. So if it meets one of the criteria, it can be designated as that. And to go down another, say, five miles per hour, that would equal your 45, but I mean.
Going westbound on that, people pick up a lot of speed because it's a brand-new road and it's a wide road. There's a lot of bicycles that are there. Then you hit the roundabout. And everyone has to really slow down and get around that roundabout and move on.
Are we talking about speed or enforcement here? I think there are two different issues here.
Take your pick. It's just that the speed. Take your pick. It's just that the speed is pretty fast. And then it continues on further as you go east on Serra Madre.
I know we have had the speed trailer out there, Chief.
Yeah. I can maybe restate your question, so John can answer it a little bit better, because I'm definitely not the expert on this. But the, there's a lot that has to do with it, and I thank John and Steve and everybody from Public Works, because we've been a partner in this process. This has gone along with our operations captain and our traffic officer being part of the Traffic Safety Committee. This is a long process, and they did a lot of diligent, really great work on it. But I'll probably just say a statement to you that will key up John to further explain this. There are some allowances that you can make, but the posted speed limit is greatly based off the 85th percentile. So if they go out there and survey the road, and the 85th percentile is 55 miles an hour, you can't make the speed limit 25. There are some things that you can do with safety measures and other factors that come into play, and John can clean this up for me a little bit. But the speed that we decide to post is largely based off the 85th percentile, and there's not basis for us to drastically go away from that.
So did you, does somebody measure that speed to get to that 85? There you go.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I'm looking. And actually, it was 47 was the 85th percentile speed.
I didn't do it. I'm innocent.
Yeah, so the 85th percentile between Yucca Ridge and Baranca was 47, and between Baranca and Grand is 46, which we just rounded down and kept it the similar, same speed limit, just because it was already there already. And we don't have the input, say, from City Council, you know, at that time, just to make that recommendation. But that's what we went with.
So, Chief, it turns into a drag strip at night.
Westbound.
It doesn't matter. Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. I have no questions. With that, I'll bring it back for a motion.
I'll move the items.
Motion by Mr. Alawas, second by
Second.
Mr. Thompson. When you hit the ballot, please push the vote. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. All right. Next item up is a capital improvement update. Read the title into the record. I think that was the title. Wait a minute. I'll come back here to capital improvement update. So, okay, can't do that anymore, so. Good deal. And Mr. Whitkoff, welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have the privilege of providing you with our quarterly update on the capital improvement program. Just a couple of things we'll be touching. This really isn't a deeply comprehensive update, really focusing more on the active projects that we're working on. We have another, a number of projects that were on the CIP list that are still early in design, so I want to focus on the ones that we're currently working on right now. A little bit of background, with the support of the council and Adam, we have put a significant amount of money in the next couple of years in our capital improvement program, and I want to thank you for that. You can see that we have $44.3 million budgeted, so thank you. That really has allowed us to do a lot and to get a lot of projects moving forward. So we'll start with the water and street improvement projects. We've talked about the Glendora Water and Street Improvement several times now. This is an exciting project that's moving forward. Just as a reminder, the location of this is on Glendora from Gladstone to Route 66. The design is currently at about 30% right now. This will include a new water main, but also, as we take a look at this, there's about 300,000 square feet worth of pavement that will be replaced. We also have ADA-compliant curb ramps, sidewalks, new signage, striping, all new traffic signals and conduit signal modifications. We are looking to have this design done end of the year, next year, kind of late into fall next year. I also want to note that we have added one thing to this, and that is the installation of conduit in the ground for future fiber. We have made a conscious decision in talking with Sam over in the IT Department about adding fiber when we're doing, or adding conduit when we're doing these projects, so we are ready for future fiber in case we have that, not only to do traffic signal interconnects, but also perhaps to provide service to our residents in the future. So one of our exciting projects that's moving forward, continuing on with the water. Again, you can see here the Colorado Water and Street Improvement Projects. Again, we're moving about 8,500 linear feet of 8-inch water, some of the water lines, some of the same things. Again, the water service, the lateral, the fire hydrants, remarkably close to 300,000 square feet worth of new pavement and resurfacing. This area, we're actually taking a look at to see what segments would be good for the conduit for future fiber, so that's being discussed right now. We are at about 60% done with the design right now. We hope to have the RFP out in spring of '26, and hopefully by the end of summer be under construction with this project as well. The Cypress Avenue and All Water Improvement Project, exactly the same thing. You can see this one's 8,300 linear feet of 8-inch pipe. This is a little bit different. We do, again, have about 300,000 square feet of pavement resurfacing, which is fantastic, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes, about how that helps our pavement condition index. Again, we're at about 60% done with this. This project is a little bit different. Some of those are just, the other ones we talked about were replacing worn mains and issues that we had out there. In this particular case, we also had issues with water pressure and water flow. We had a couple of dead-end areas where at the end of the service line, we didn't have enough water pressure to really provide adequate flow in case of an emergency, so this will help us address those. And then the North Glendora Reservoir Project, this is moving forward. We are at about 95% on the design. You got an email last week that we've sent out our notice of intent for the MND, so that's being posted. We're working through that. We hope to be out to bid in early 2026. So a couple of key things that we need to get done the rest of this year is scheduling some neighborhood meetings with those folks in Easely Canyon, again, at the top of Glendora. One of the issues in the early conversations, especially in the Easely Canyon area, was concern for their private roadways, and with all of the construction activity, it would cause damage to the road. So to help mitigate those concerns, we added that reconstruction of that road into the project for the contractor that's doing the replacement of the reservoirs, so that there is assurances to those residents when the project is complete, they'll go back and grind and overlay that street, so it'll look just like it does today, look brand-new when we're done. So that project is moving forward, and I'm really excited to actually get this one going. So the pavement management plan, just a quick update on this. We had originally hoped to bring this to you in November. It's going to be December now. We are really combing through all of the data that was provided and looking at funding sources, maintenance types. I want to come back and provide you a comprehensive update, so we'll have this to you in December. But there is a lot of information in there. We wanted to also make sure that we incorporated all of the CIP projects that we just talked about, especially with the water, because those have a significant impact on our pavement condition index. So look forward to another fun update in December on that. We have the Glendora People Movement Project. Just, I think, for a quick reminder, 10-plus miles of transportation improvements. We have the Urban Trail, the first-last mile. Design is about 90% right now. You can see for the San Dimas Wash Trail, we're hoping to start construction spring of 2026. The first-last mile, so Glendora foothill construction will start in late '26, and then the Little Dalton Trail, probably mid to late 2027. Also, as a side note with this, Valerie met with our contractor that will be restoring the antique streetlights, and that project will be starting in just a couple of months. So it'll give them time to get through that and get those streetlights ready for this project. Moving on to some of the facility updates, we have the South Hills Bike Park. The bike park design is going quite well. The next steps really for us are to focus on the civil work and all the MEP work that goes in with all of that. You can see from the picture, we've got an access roadway, parking lot, and restrooms that we've got to work through, so we're still expecting construction late '26, and this project is moving forward. The Finkbinder Stormwater Capture Project, this is going to be a fun one. We are at about 90% design right now. We are still anticipating construction in 2027. That really allows us the opportunity to get those disbursements from the county for that money, to make sure we have the money in the bank before we start the construction. But you can see that the final design should be completed the end of this year. The MND will go out and come to council in early '26 with the construction of spring of 2027. Some traffic-related issues here. So our HSIP Cycle 11 grant is getting ready to move forward. That will be coming to you in November for approval, but we have a number of intersections that are receiving some improvements, things like enhanced pedestrian safety, high-visibility crosswalks, and some of the areas, we're installing some protected left turns and moving the left-turn arrow that you see in the median up to the mast arm for better visibility. So I'm excited to see that project coming forward, and we'll be going out to bid soon for HSIP Cycle 12. A side note that's not in here, we did apply for a Safe Streets for All grant for a couple of hot signals, and we should know whether or not we're going to be successful in that grant in early December, so keep your fingers crossed that we can get that one approved. And you can also see here the Engineering and Traffic Study, which you just had that wonderful presentation on. I would like to take a moment and thank Valerie and our consultants and the whole team. That was a huge project to get that to you. They did a tremendous job, so super proud of the work they did, and I think it turned out quite well, so thank you to them for all of that hard work. All right. And just a quick thing on some of the projects here. This is kind of an overall list. Some of the LaFetre improvements, we are working on those back stairs. That should be ready to go out to bid in just a couple of months. The skate park resurfacing proposal, John Aguri set up a meeting last week with the contractor that originally installed the skate park. We walked that area. We should have our proposal early next week to do some refresh. I won't spoil surprise of what they've recommended for us, but be a little bit more than just recoding some of the areas, so they've got some exciting opportunities for us to refresh that and make it look a little bit better than it does today. And then at your next meeting, you will get to take a look at the Stormwater Master Plan, so that is another major project that we're working on. The rest of these are somewhere in the design phase, but again, they're much lower down in that process as far as how far we've gotten, so I didn't want to get into every one of those, especially at 10:45 at night. It's past my bedtime. So with that, that completes my presentation. I would certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding our quarterly update for the CIP.
Thank you, Bill. Very thorough. Appreciate it very much. Bring it back for any comments, or Shawna?
Nothing for me. Thank you so much.
Mendel?
Super job. Going to be some busy years ahead.
Yes, we will be very busy.
And we're obviously going to miss you.
Thank you.
But thanks for, just a great update. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ken, Karen?
Thank you. And the key word, patience.
Yes.
The residents, as some of those streets will be under construction, just patience and look forward to the fabulous things that are going to be done.
Yes.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Bill. Really well done, as usual. Any supply chain issues with water pipes?
At this point, we are not aware of any.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I think we've got enough lead time. We'll be good.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and very thorough. I have no questions, so I'll entertain a motion to accept.
She'll move.
Second.
Mr. Thompson, Mr. Alawas, okay, and invite you to vote. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Next item is a first reading and introduction of ordinance adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Codes, and invite Mr. David Collette. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good evening. Do I control the, oh, somebody's doing it for me. Awesome. Thank you. So tonight's the first reading and introduction of the ordinance adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Codes. So every three years, the state of California, specifically the California Building Standards Commission adopts and publishes, adopts and publishes a new edition of the codes that govern the design and construction of buildings, associated facilities, and equipment throughout the state. And local jurisdictions are required by state law to enforce these codes. The new building codes become effective January 1st of 2026. This is, I just put a few, like, general updates. There's a lot of updates in the code. I just listed a few things here. So the 2025 updates advance statewide goals for energy efficiency with each code cycle every three years. That is always a primary thing, the energy efficiency. Electrification, they're requiring more electric, well, they're trying to phase out gas, I think is what the goal is, gas appliances and everything, so there's always a push for that, and then wildfire resilience. So updates include stronger electric-ready requirements in the Energy Code, new electric vehicle charging, and automatic load management system provisions in the Cal Green Code, improved coordination of photovoltaic and battery energy storage standards, and introduction of a new standalone wild and urban interface code consolidating wildfire resilience and access standards. Previously, in our current codes, they would put the, all the fire, like, hazard requirements, they would intermix them in with the building code and the residential code, and they've taken that out and made a standalone code for that. Regarding Assembly Bill 130 that the state passed, it temporarily restricts local jurisdictions from adopting or enforcing building standards for residential occupancies that are more restrictive than those contained in the California Building Standards Code. This is between October 1st, 2025, and June 1st of 2031, except where necessary to address an imminent threat to health or safety or as otherwise permitted by state law. And this ordinance adopts the 2025 California Building Standards Codes consistent with those requirements. We're not making any additional code requirements. We're just taking it, taking it as it's written, as we do pretty much every time. So the recommendation is that the City Council, and I'll just read it right now, and I guess that'll save council from having to read it if I just, okay, awesome. That the City Council introduced for first reading an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Glendora, California Adopting the 2025 Additions of the California Administrative Code, California Fire Code, California Building Code, California Existing Building Code, California Historical Building Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Wildland Urban Interface Code, California Electrical Code, California Residential Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, and California Energy Code, including selected appendices thereto, by reading of the title only and waiving further reading and directing the preparation of a summary of ordinance for publication pursuant to Government Code 36933 and Resolution CC 2018-40." And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collette. Appreciate it. Very thorough. I'll bring it back for discussion and invite Mendel.
Excellent job. Just curious, the number of new codes that were adopted, do you have any idea?
I do not. Tomorrow, I'm in Costa Mesa for training. Our whole staff's this week in training on it. There's a lot of change, a lot of laws, too, as you guys are probably aware of, too, so that we're sifting through right now and stuff, but yeah.
I'm just curious, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's every time there's
Like 800, 1,000, or?
I don't know what the number is. If I can find that, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen? All right. Shawna?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you, David, for the nice report. I'll move items, recommendations 1 and 2.
Okay, I have no questions, so I'll accept that as a motion, and
I'll second.
Second by Karen, and ask us to kindly place our votes. Thank you. Motion carries 5-0. Issue passes. Thank you very much. Brings us to one last item, Consider Approval of City Attorney Rate Increases and Amendment to the City Attorney Contract. Accused himself? Oh, no. Okay. So invite City Attorney Danny Ailshire to report, or?
Mayor, it's actually going to be me to do the quick presentation, and City Attorney will be able to answer any questions. So the city received a request to review the compensation as relates to the hourly rates charged for specific types of services, such as personnel labor, some planning items, public works items, code enforcement, items that really exist and that last more than six hours. The contract that the city has with the firm, with our city attorney firm, was originally entered into an early 2018. Contract allows for a monthly fee, which is currently $21,049 a month, which includes routine legal services, some drafting of includes routine legal services, some drafting of staff reports, ordinances, some minimal research or interim research before a major task is undertaken. That fee is not subject to the rate increase. The city annually has up to three up to 3% rate increases, not to be below zero or above three based on CPI. And during the COVID pandemic, the city attorney did not ask the city for those 3% increases. So on average, in order to keep up somewhere in the market rate, they're asking between six and about 18% increase on an hourly rate depending on the type of services it is. The rates that are included in your staff report tonight are still below market rate that we do get charged when we use other city attorney services. So the city attorney had a closed session item for the review. Subsequent to that review, staff received direction to place this item on the city council agenda for consideration. The annual impact is about $44,000 to $50,000 a year, between $3,000 and $4,000 a month on average. And the funds for this would already be included in our authorized spending plan. So with that, I know the city attorney mayor is happy to answer any questions, and I'm happy to answer any procedural or financial questions.
Thank you, Adam. Bring it back for any questions. Mendel?
No, I'm good and support it.
Karen?
I support it also.
Shawna?
Ditto.
Michael?
I move recommendations, one and two, and then three.
Okay.
Second.
And I have no questions. So let's please place our vote. Motion carries, item carries, 5-0. Thank you very much, and thank you, Aleshire and Winder, for your services. That concludes our agenda items. I'll bring it back for any closing comments.